The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell? I heard him say president. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Beal is present. Alderman Zloski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is present. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is present. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Scott is present. Alderman Secha Lopez. Secha Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderman Urban. Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is present. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is present. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is present. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is present. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Riley is present. Alderman Smith. Smith is present. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is present. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is present. Alderman Kappelman. Kappelman is present. Alderman Martin. Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is present. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is present. We have two more that have just come in. Mitchell is present. Any others? O'Shea is present. Alderman King is present. Alderman Curtis is present. Any others?
There are 38 members present. We have a quorum. Please rise, everyone, for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing, ladies and gentlemen, for the invocation which will be delivered by Ashley Munson, Senior Manager of Advocacy at the Greater Chicago Food Deposit.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Greetings from the All Nations Worship Assembly of Chicago. Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving God, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. Thank you for life itself, for good health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In your word, you have established authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, today bless our mayor, our aldermen and alderwomen and their staffs, the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what's good and fitting for our people, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is disagreement, personal peace in their lives and families, and joy in their task. Bless the agenda set before them today to be fruitful and beneficial for the common good. May you renew the servants' heart of our mayor and council that they will always seek to serve the least, the lost, and left out among us. Steer their intentions to align with your righteousness' will. Remind them of your faithful provision when it seems to fall short. Establish the work of our hands and bring to the fulfillment all that you have given us to do in these days. We thank you for our beloved city of Chicago and all those who reside in it, and we lift the city back to you. In your holy and gracious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, is public comment. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore. Do you wish to be recorded present for the record, sir? Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderman, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Any other members of the body who've come in after the initial quorum call? All right. Public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker is Kathy Powers.
Everybody. Good morning, everybody. My name is Kathy Powers. I'm a lifelong resident of Chicago. I'm here to talk about decorum. Decorum. City Council is the face of the city. And what we've been hearing lately is not exactly a very... It's been more MAGA lately. It's not right. I wrote a poem about it. And I wrote a poem about how city council, some people, you know who you are, have been talking about the police. My poem is called "Cops Out." My cops are my cops, not your cops. Just my cops. Your cops are my cops when your cops answer my cops' calls. My cops and your cops aren't our cops when they're the mayor's cops. Our cops, not your cops, not mayor's cops, cop out whenever. Listen, guys. We're not MAGA. We're Chicago. Let's act like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, for your comments. Our next speaker is Teresa McNamara.
Hello. My name is Teresa McNamara with the Southwest Environment Alliance. Mayor Lightfoot and members of the city council. We are here today to ask you a simple question. Are you blind, deaf, or overwhelming? Let me get my glasses. Are you deaf and overwhelming evidence of this deadly pollution inundating the residents of the southwest side of Chicago? Or full knowledge of the facts that you are intentionally allowing it to grow even more deadly? Do you realize that targeting our communities in this way is environmental racism? Why must the southwest communities of color live with poisonous emissions so the north side communities can breathe clean air? The southwest side is one of the highest levels of pollution in the city. As a consequence, the highest level of COVID infection. The silence of our city council and our mayor is deafening. Under this administration, polluters like Kramer Steel, Oremus, Mad Asphalt, and Sims Metal Management, and scores of others, have your support. You had an opportunity to stop Oremus from opening, block Mad Asphalt's permit application, and now stop Sims from their permit renewal application. Instead, you stand firmly with these polluters. After breaking your campaign pledge to curb pollution, Mayor Lightfoot, you, with some of your city hall cronies, have hung a giant banner over the southwest side that says, "Polluters, Welcome." Repeated studies on the effects of diesel fumes reflect clear connection between these fumes and higher rates of asthma in children, heart disease and respiratory illnesses, and shorter lifespan for adults. The southwest side has six regions, eight rail switching yards, scores of huge trucks, lots, miles of street clogged with trucks, and two expressways cutting through the neighborhoods. Once again, our mayor and city council acts blind and deaf. Mayor and city council members, you have an opportunity to care about the health and well-being of residents in the southwest side and say no to the renewal permit to Sims Metal. By your actions, you will be signaling clearly whether you want to serve polluting industries or residents of the city. You know the people who elected you. We do have money for...
Ms. McNamara, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
Good morning to Madam Lady Lightfoot. You know you are the beating board for everybody. That pollution been out there. They had several aldermen that promised to clean it up. So y'all shut up. Leave her alone. Whatever is happening to Chicago been happening. Under Mayor Daley, Emanuel, all of them. So stop beating up on Lady Lightfoot. She didn't bring this doo-doo to City Hall. It's been here. Now, when you get ready to throw out the babies, throw them all out. Throw the Hispanic aldermen out. Throw the black aldermen out. Throw the white aldermen out. And then maybe you can consider something with Miss Lightfoot. But if this high crime, it's been here. Racism, it's been here. Poor education in the black community, it's been here. It's been here. So shut the... ...about Miss Lightfoot. What's your love fest for Miss Lightfoot? My love fest is with the truth. And the truth will set you free. All these old political hacks been here. All of y'all been here. And have that dastardly when somebody get killed or shot or carjacked. Oh, Miss Lightfoot, you police were been racist. You been killing black people. All of this doo-doo here has been here. Now shut the what up talking about Miss Lightfoot. So all of you, Brandon Riley, Urban, Michelle Harris, call their damn names, George Blakemore. All of them. Emma Mitts, Hopkins, all of y'all. All of y'all are at fault. Don't start punching your finger at Mr. Blakemore. Turn around and look in the mirror and point your finger at you. You, you, and you, and all of y'all. It is a culture of corruption here. But at the bottom of the caste system are the blacks. The bottom are the blacks. Now the Hispanics are taking over. The Asians are taking over. You, your population is gone. Over a million have left. During Mayor Daley, when he closed down these projects, said you will return. It's been ethnic cleansing. All of y'all are at fault, you black people. All of y'all.
Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Anthony Aner.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Avina from the 11th Ward IPO in Bridgeport Alliance. As one of my organization's named state, I'm from the 11th ward. Though who's to say which ward I'll be in in the coming year since that matter has yet to be settled? Regardless, I'm here to support my neighborhood and my city as a whole in an effort to curb environmental hazards. I'm here to remind our mayor, Lori Lightfoot, of her promise to prioritize clean air. Sims Metal Management, located on Palina off Blue Island in Pilsen, is in proximity to eight public schools, with the closest being two blocks away. Also in the area is an asphalt plant, six tri-facilities, including H Kramer &amp; Co. in Oremus Concrete and a brownfield. Just having one of these entities is a violation of having a greener Chicago, yet we have nine. A 2020 report posted by Lurie Children's Hospital of Chicago say that 16% of Chicago families have a child or children diagnosed with asthma. This is higher than a state's rate of 11% and a national rate of 12% at the time. I have little doubt that the aforementioned facilities contribute to these statistics. Stats, sorry. Sims emissions test is less than 50% capture efficiency where our state's requirement is 81%. It's more than a 31% failure gap. If we were to apply an academic grade to Sims testing, they would receive a D, while the threshold for passing is a B+. A local community group, Pilsen Environmental Rights and Reform Organization, or FEDERAL, put in an effort led by Donald Wink, a UIC chemistry professor, to research Sims situation. Professor Wink concluded that it's not possible to provide meaningful comment due to Sims report lacking clarity or information. In other words, does data Sims provided are not accurate, and that alone shouldn't be enough to deny their permit? Our state's attorney general, Kwame Raoul, is suing Sims due to breaking air pollution laws. Part of discovery for this lawsuit uncovered that Sims was likely emitting more than 25 tons per year of volatile organic material. Our AG Raoul is doing his part. Let's do ours. The federal EPA and our communities are watching our actions. This should be low-hanging fruit for our city council when it comes to clean air priorities, yet here I am pleading action. I demand a public hearing in the community affected by this facility to further support what I see as an obvious decision for the well-being of current and future Chicagoans. The decision to reject Sims Metal Management's renewal of their recycling permit and to take a step towards a better future because the road is still long and winding.
Thank you, Mr. Aner, for your comments. Our next speaker is Melvin Bailey.
Good morning, Senate Counselors, Melvin Bailey. And I do agree somewhat with Mr. Blakemore. Miss Lightfoot, this is not on your watch. I've been coming down here for the past two administrations, asking for opportunity and making sure that we can get the guns out of these kids' hands and stop this senseless violence. And Mayor, I'm here today again sharing with you. I would like to maybe meet with your department, someone out of your department, and have a sit-down with Streets and Sands so we can rectify the situation about not getting paid. And I disagree with George Blakemore when he jumped on my aldermen, Emma Mitts, and the rest of the aldermen. That's where we draw the line at because I know when I sit with the aldermen at their office and at their home, what we're trying to do, door by door, block by block, trying to talk to these young men. But without the tools, Mayor, like you shared on your campaign speech, without the tools, without the viable tools for me to have them to say, "Man, give me that gun. Let me give you an opportunity," and cleaning up the streets, cleaning up the neighborhood, and, you know, my hands are tied. And I'd like to thank the Department of Housing for approving us for being affordable housing through city council. I'd like to thank all the aldermen that voted for me to start building affordable housing, starting in Alderman Burnett's ward. But each alderman want me to come in their ward and build, each one of them that I spoke to. So, Mayor, by that being said, can you please have someone from your office? Maybe we can sit down and talk to Streets and Sands. And it is a cultural racism within the city. And I know you got a bunch of employees. You can't birdwatch everyone. But at the same token, that's what we're here for, for the community to reach out for the voiceless, the people that's not coming down here speaking. We're here to speak for them to say, you know, enough is enough. Maybe, you know, we just need to work better together and have an open conversation and a dialogue to make sure that we're not saying the same thing, but we're going back to the community with some results. So we have to go back to the community with some results to show the young men and women that's out here committing this senseless violence, this senseless crime, letting them know that someone is down here speaking on their behalf to make sure that we can change lives. So again, Mayor, if you can reach out to your administration to have someone to sit down with us, with touch and go, because we don't want to get in a situation that we haven't been compensated over 2021. Now we breached a contract in 2022 because they haven't, you know, paid the small African-American woman vendor. So please, Mayor, would you guys look into it? And then I will be talking to several aldermen to intervene in this issue as well. But, you know, this issue will not die. We'll continue talking and pounding the pavement to make sure that we can have some viable change in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Thank you very much. My name is Mary Gonzalez. I'm a Mexican-American resident of Pilsen in Chicago. I've lived in this neighborhood since 1958. I'm a member of St. Paul Catholic Church and the social justice team and a leader in the Southwest Environmental Alliance. I speak before you today in frustration. In 2019, we created Southwest Environmental Alliance, made up of seven neighborhoods, to attempt to reduce the environmental poison being released in the air of our communities. You ought to understand, we're not a 501(c)(3). We're just homeowners, residents, parents of little kids who are frightened by what's happening in our neighborhood. We began with Mad Asphalt in McKinley Park. This company succeeded getting into that neighborhood because it was maneuvered by the local aldermen and his city cronies. And no one knew it was going to go into operation until it was already there. But we were so excited when Lori Lightfoot decided to run for mayor because we thought it was going to be a new day. And she wrote in her plan for a cleaner environment under the heading, "Bring back the city's Department of the Environment," which we agreed on. And I quote you, this is what she said. "The lack of city involvement and oversight is evident in McKinley Park, where Mad Asphalt was allowed to build an asphalt plant within 1,000 feet of a school, a 69-acre public park, and numerous homes without adequate notice to the community." And she was right. But today, Mad Asphalt enjoys the support of the mayor, multimillion-dollar contract, and she has joined forces with Alderman Cardenas to block any effort to bring Mad Asphalt into compliance. Then came Oremus Materia. But this was happening during COVID. They wanted a permit. The city was closed to us, the residents and voters, but Oremus had no problem obtaining a permit despite our public protest, public anger, meetings, constant communication with city officials via phone and Zoom, unlike the polluters. And they won, and we lost. So now we're surrounded by highways, industrial quarters, heavy truck traffic on all our streets, permits being given to polluters, new polluters moving in to assure the north side has clean air. And this is, as Ms. McNamara said, truly environmental racism at its best. An ABC National investigative reporter recently told me that Pilsen appears to be the most polluted community in the nation. But let's do a little history. Let's go back to 1906, when Upton Sinclair described Pilsen in his book, The Jungle, as "that slum." Since then, Pilsen served as a port of entry for people from many countries. The last movement of immigrants into Pilsen began in the late '50s, and they were Spanish-speaking. I know, I was one of them. All of these immigrants...
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Anna Shabrowski. Ms. Shabrowski, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Anna Shabrowski. I'm a resident of Bridgeport and member of Bridgeport Alliance. I'm speaking to you today about Sims Metal Management. I urge the city to hold a public hearing regarding Sims, and I oppose a new operating permit for Sims. Sims has been violating clean air regulations and emitting pollution into our air for years. In 2016, the U.S. EPA observed hydrocarbons exiting Sims Hammer Mill Shredder and fugitive particulate matter crossing the property line. In 2018, Sims paid a $225,000 civil penalty for violations of the Clean Air Act and agreed to limit volatile organic material emissions to less than 25 tons per year. In 2021, an emissions capture test showed Sims shredder was capturing less than 50% of emissions when it was mandated to capture at least 81%. The Illinois EPA referred Sims to the Illinois Attorney General for enforcement, and in October 2021, the Illinois Attorney General filed a lawsuit against Sims for failing to reduce volatile organic material emissions for more than 40 violations of the Illinois Environmental Protection Act and Illinois Pollution Control Board Air Pollution Regulations, and for jeopardizing public health and the environment. Lawsuits and civil penalties have not convinced Sims to clean up their act. The city has a chance to stop Sims by denying a renewed operating permit and making sure they shut down while they're not permitted. On the southwest side, we are tired of pollution in our air and water, pollution that's increasing rates of asthma, cancer, heart disease, and lung disease among our residents. On the southwest side, we're tired of different levels of government pointing fingers at one another. The U.S. EPA points to the Illinois EPA. The Illinois EPA points to the city government. City council points to DPD. DPD points to CDPA. We need accountability. On the southwest side, we're tired of the environmental racism that removes polluters from white, wealthy communities and moves them into working-class communities of color. We want a public hearing on the southwest side so that we can voice our opposition to Sims renewal permit. We oppose the permit renewal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shabrowski, for your comments. Our next speaker is Emma Lozano.
Good morning. God bless Mayor Lightfoot and all the members of the city council. A special shout-out to Alderman Maldonado, Coleman, and Walter Burnett, who's always been there on the immigrant rights stuff. May God bless you and all your decisions that affect our communities. I'm Emma Lozano, pastor of Lincoln United Methodist Church in Pilsen. And our church is a member of the Social Justice Committee in Pilsen, which is comprised of churches, leaders, organizations on the southwest side. Our neighborhoods are contaminated. For years, companies operating without the proper ventilation and regulations that have caused Pilsen to be now the most contaminated community in the nation. The city has neglected to impose the state air and land regulations, and we have paid the price with hundreds of thousands who have developed asthma, respiratory, and even cancer for the amount of lead and toxins that have been accumulated for decades. This administration prided itself during the election and campaign that would crack down so this wouldn't continue happening and clean up. So today, Social Justice Committee of Pilsen and the Coalition demand that the application for Sims management permit to continue operating be rejected. And we also call for the city of Chicago to join us in a public meeting to discuss plans to clean up our community and discuss reparations for the decades of environmental violence and racism that has been perpetrated on our Latinx barrios and our families. We are woke now, and we further request that the mayor and the city work with our alderman Byron Secha. The pandemic has joined with this contamination, has cost so many lives. We can't breathe. We need to clean up, and we need to get paid back, or we're going to shut them down. Mayor, it's redemption time. Let's get together for justice, safety for our barrios together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano, for your comments. Our next speaker is Autumn Grant.
Autumn Grant is not present.
Our next speaker is Trina Tyler-Reynolds.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Trina Tyler. I'm a resident of South Shore. I'm on the local school council for South Shore International College Prep. Shout-out to the TARS. I'm also a homeowner in South Shore, and my family's been a homeowner in South Shore for generations. And I'm generally here today as a concerned citizen and a member of Not Me We. My question is, where is the support for renters in South Shore and the structure needed to support those who have already been displaced? I feel we're deep down the road of displacement, already having pushed out so many people from South Shore, and then there's this rumbling of displacement en masse. And it's deeply challenging for families, right? Family-owned buildings, condo owners, but especially renters. I've witnessed landlords and tenants make strategic moves I've witnessed landlords and tenants make strategic moves because of the system as it stands today, either through scams to secure housing, because it's challenging to secure it in the first place, or landlords charging ridiculous fees, leaving tenants to struggle regularly, and forcing displacement in preparation for a new demographic of people who want to be adjacent to the Obama Center. 846 awards for rental relief were provided in South Shore, a neighborhood nicknamed "the eviction capital." That's wild to me. Not Me We, a tenant organizing group in South Shore, came out with a comprehensive list of demands that includes homeowners and renters, but as of yet, I've seen no movement on policies that can impact the conditions of my neighbors today. We need things like an office of tenant advocate as people are getting locked out of their homes, facing forced evictions, and not receiving their relocation fees. We need a rental registry. It really bothers me that in the era of evidence-based solutions, the city cannot on its own look at data about landlords and tenants in this city, period. And it would add a much-needed transparency to the landlord-tenant relationship, keeping landlords accountable and helping renters stay safe and stable in their homes. We need truly affordable housing in South Shore for households earning less than 30% of the AMI. So what's your plan for South Shore? Like, what is your plan for the students? Because their housing directly impacts the way that they show up at school. And I recognize this is a citywide issue and that there are a lot of issues on the table, but I truly feel like this is one that should be prioritized. With the pending Obama Center, change is coming, and it's already done a lot of harm. Additionally, when people are displaced, it's really quite difficult to go back and provide justice to those people. So can y'all commit to supporting renters in South Shore or in the city? Do y'all care about people who are not homeowners? If so, what's your plan? Not Me We has asked for y'all to ensure equitable development in South Shore, to expand tenant protections, to prevent and address displacement, to preserve the little affordable housing that we have, and also protect South Shore homeowners. My last question really is, like, how long will we let big real estate run our markets? Like, these policies can be implemented across neighborhoods, but I'm speaking from South Shore.
Ms. Reynolds, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Kiara Harden.
Please press star six to unmute.
Hello? Can I be heard?
We can hear you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Kiara Harden. I am a five-year South Shore resident who was concerned about displacement. In 2018, I moved to 72nd and South Shore Drive, where I was paying $850 for rent. And upon renewing my lease in 2001, the price escalated to $1,200, which is way more than 30% of my income. There were no repairs, no maintenance, or any updates to warrant this increase. Being a college-educated person, my potential to benefit this community is essential, and the threat of being sold out because I am not yet a homeowner is very discouraging. And it sends the message that my elected officials and local organizations, who are supposed to be developing communities, do not care about the growth of the community members who are already living here. I was devastated to have to relocate, and even though I only moved seven minutes away, it's the beginning of a devastating trend, right? Because even though those seven minutes are short, I still was displaced. I still had to leave my apartment that I love to live somewhere else. And if the city doesn't adhere to the South Shore Community Benefits Agreement that was just mentioned, I don't know. I think that it's going to be too late to adhere to or to try to save this mixed-income, very diverse community. If you want more information about the demands, you can also just go to the Obama CPA dot org, and they were actually mentioned in the previous comment before me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no other speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment, period.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes public comment. Next up on our agenda is resolutions. Today, we have two resolutions, a congratulatory resolution for Mark Kelly and a resolution to recognize International Holocaust Remembrance Day. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the amended consideration of these two resolutions.
There are no objections, so ordered. In the interest of time, we will forego the lengthy reading of the resolutions and instead hear comments and remarks from city council. Again, we have with us today in the box former commissioner of D case Mark Kelly, along with his wife and others who have come today to support him. Wife is Tricia Needham. We also have from D case Sue Vopika, Tara Vock, and others who are here to support Commissioner Kelly, who has that glow of retirement. Are there members of the body who wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the city council, of course, the chairman of the happy committee, who certainly has to say something. Mark, it was a pleasure working with you. I know it wasn't a long time. I was only a short time chairperson under your tenure, but, you know, what a great job you do, your predecessor, and I'm certain that I have high hopes for Aaron Harkey after you. Just a pleasure to work with your buddy. Wish you the best. Mrs. Kelly, I don't know if he's going to be a pain in the butt when he's around, or you got a big honeydew list for him, but, you know, we'll miss him. God bless you and your family. Thank you so much for everything, all your service to the city, Mark. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. The chair recognizes Alderman Ropelos.
Commissioner Kelly, I want to thank you for all the years of service that you put in at Columbia College. It's amazing. Then you came to work here, and I think you're going to be bored, so you better find something to do soon. But the fact is that each year, when I looked at the budget, you have the fewest members in your organization, and yet you did a lot more than what we anticipated for the city of Chicago. And for that alone, you are to be commended, and I thank you, and we will certainly miss you. Congratulations and good luck to your next life. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Commissioner Kelly, it has been a genuine privilege, like the last few years, to serve with you, to have this opportunity to learn from you. It is really one thing to appreciate the arts and the cultural identity of our city, but the work that you did to cultivate it, to support it, to be an advocate was inspiring, and it was agitating in the best way. I really appreciate the way you helped to keep me accountable on my end for what I was doing to support the organizations that were receiving grants in my ward, the way you encouraged me to build those relationships. I take that to heart. Our conversations that we had stay with me, and I just want you to always carry with you the impact that you made on this city during your tenure. Long will outlast your time of service. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, members of the city council. Mark, over here. It's just like budget, I got to wait. I just want to thank you on behalf of my residents and our city for your service. I know over the last two administrations, we've had our ups and downs together, but always in pursuit of what was best for the department and what was best for the vitality and soul of the city of Chicago. And I can say honestly, particularly through this pandemic, that you showed what the soul of Chicago can do when put to the challenge. When your department was hit with almost no revenue, the department didn't simply cease, they just evolved and evolved in a way that helped all the other departments. And as well, as things started opening up again, you were focusing on new and innovative ways to make some of our legacy events relevant in this new world we find ourselves in, most notably by bringing the Taste of Chicago to greater Englewood and other events back into the neighborhoods as opposed to being downtown-centric. I know you could not do that without the support and financing from the administration, and I want to thank Mayor Lightfoot for making that happen, to give you the leeway to do that. But I think money and leeway would not have happened without leadership under you. And having been in this role and in other roles before this, I think we have been well-served by your tenure, and I just want to say on behalf of my residents and personally on behalf of me, thank you for meeting the challenge and thank you for whatever you're going to do next, because I'm sure, unfortunately, you don't know how to stay home and do nothing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Smith. No. No.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Superintendent, I just want to, Commissioner Kelly, I just want to thank you so much for everything you've done for our city. The arts are an incredibly important part of the 43rd Ward's makeup business, and you were a tremendous help during the year of public art. And I'm only, it's just too bad, the pandemic interrupted among the many things that it interrupted, some of the plans that I know that you had. And I know, though, that your successors and the mayor and everyone will continue to push for the things that you were pushing for. And I also want to echo Alderman's statement that your staff was so wonderful during the pandemic to completely pivot from doing just completely arts-relating things to helping get the special event permits that were necessary in order to allow outdoor dining, just made that change to help the rest of the city. And a lot of that is absolutely due to your wonderful leadership and your vision as art is having a central place in our city. So thank you very, very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Harrison.
I think it's the mask that I can't hear and I can't see. Anyway, Commissioner, I rise in support of this resolution to congratulate you. Where did the time go? It seems, I've been thinking, you know, you were only here a couple of years, but it was not. And I remember when you first came, I was a little skeptical, and I'm like, well, what's he going to do? Well, you showed me, and I think we have had a wonderful time together, and you took the creativity that you had and you expressed it all over the city, and you included communities that had never been included before. And I am sorry that the pandemic hit because I was really looking forward to a lot of the things that we had had planned. But I think most important, your legacy has been to bring the arts to the whole city of Chicago and to all of the neighborhoods. And I think that's where the people, the citizens in Chicago, feel the pride in their neighborhoods, because you showcased them, you showed up, and you showed out. So thank you for your service and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The chair recognizes Alderman Oss.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Kelly, I want to wish you well. I want to thank you for your service. As my colleagues have said, you helped use your department and the arts to guide our city through a very challenging time. And I think also prepare us to pivot, and as we come out of the pandemic, hopefully for good this spring and this summer, Chicagoans are going to want to gather and get together. And the art that you started with at Columbia College and that you have really focused on around the city, I think that's been really important to say, is that you've highlighted arts everywhere. I think it's going to be very important for Chicagoans as we come out of the pandemic. So you laid a great foundation, you worked with a great team, and all of us wish you nothing but success and peace and happiness in the future. Thank you.
Northerner, the chair recognizes Alderman Oss.
Thank you, Madam President. I also stand associated and want to thank Commissioner Kelly. Even before I was in council or understood how government worked, looking at what the commissioner has done to really offer opportunities for artists across the city should be commended. We often thank everybody for their work. I can tell from my own experience with the commissioner, it never felt like you were doing it, viewing it as work. It always looked like you were working with the passion of an artist and of a musician, and I think that is appreciated. I think the leadership that you've shown even before COVID, when the budget was cut in half and still being able to move forward and offer opportunities for people, the city can't thank you enough. And I don't think we're going to fully know the extent of everything you've done, because we're going to see future generations of musicians and artists and people that have found opportunity to express themselves, many who have never had a chance because of the work that you've done. And lastly, it felt really good, where we had conversations before to talk about like this store to help support artists. And the first thing that you mentioned, and something that was core to your value, was, yeah, we can do a store, we can promote this stuff, but how are the artists going to get paid? And when we think about what artists try to do, they don't get 401K, they don't get the kind of support other, you know, jobs do. To have that be at the core of what you do means so much to us as people, as Chicagoans, as artists, and the city thanks you so much for what you do. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Oss. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution, to commend you on an outstanding career. My colleagues mentioned that you have touched every inch of this city with your department and with your leadership, but I just wanted to personally thank you for the mural program that we launched a few years ago. And that program allowed us to bring all the high schools together in the area, along with a local artist who graduated from one of the high schools in the community, and put a mural in on a vibe-out that is really second to none. And so, and we talked about being able to pay that artist on time, and he was paid on time. And so, bringing the whole community together was because of your leadership that you brought to that department. So thank you so much for everything that you've done, and, you know, best wishes on your retirement, and thank you again. Thank you.
Alderman Beal, the chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President, and to my Gospel Fest tambourine partner, Commissioner Kelly. I'm going to hold you to it that we'll still be each other's tambourine partners at Gospel Fest. But I want to even thank you for what you did on last year in honoring Reverend Dr. Clay Evans and Archbishop Lucius Hall and Bishop Willie James Campbell and Pastor Macio Woods and the rich legacy that those great men in ministry have left here in Chicago. I grew up in special events when it was in this building with Eddie Spaghetti and all of them upstairs, so I've always loved this department. It was the funnest other than Chicago Park District, and it was so important to see that D case, under your leadership, supported those artists, like in the Inglewood Arts Collective and the House Music Picnic that we did in Inglewood on that very blistering hot day. So I want to thank you for understanding the cultural and what it means, not only just in Millennial Park, but all across the city, especially on the south and west side. Congratulations. I look forward to your fun retirement and, again, have your tambourine ready for Gospel Fest, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Oss.
Entirement, I like that. Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Mike is what I called you. I thank you so much for all that you have done, as all others have stated, but with the mural program that Alderman Beal spoke about, as he stated, all was included in that. I'm sorry that we won't get a chance to do the Taste of South Austin, as we talked about, but maybe in the coming years, we'll still be able to get that done through Taste of Chicago. For the appointment that you had gotten when you came in, I was like Alderman Harrison, a little skeptical, because we had so many questions on what was going to happen, and you have just outdone yourself. You have just done such a great job for the city of Chicago, and we are all appreciative of all of what you have done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Oss. The chair recognizes Alderman Miss.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner, you may not know it, but I do have a granddaughter that's over at Columbia College and who is an artist, and she's displaying her artwork in one of the bookstores over at the college. So you have been very inspirational to young people, and I'm appreciative of that. I do know that you're leaving too soon for me. I was just getting ready to get started with some artwork. I want to change the looks of the Austin community. I want to be able to put up more artwork. We're just getting started a little, but I think whoever be the predecessor need to come in, and now that's lighting up that area so we can feel that hope. I think artwork is so important as I ride through the city and see all of the artworks and all of the vibe-out. There are much work need to be done there. I think you was getting ready to get there, but we're going to have to pass it off to your predecessor, because I do want you to be able to enjoy your retirement after spending so many years. But your wisdom and words- But your wisdom and words can always be used to spearhead continuing to making it better for others who are still here. Thank you so much for your work. Thank your family for sharing you with us during the time that you've been in the business. Thank you, and looking forward, and congratulation on your retirement.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Commissioner Kelly, Mark, I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the residents of the 35th Ward for everything you have done for the city of Chicago. A great city, a world-class city, must have arts, it must have culture. And if you look throughout the history of mankind, the state, the government, has always played a critical role in arts and culture. But unfortunately, sometimes the state decides to uplift some voices to the detriment of others. And that is the exact opposite of what you did. You ensured that the great diversity of our great city, you ensured that all of the different arts, of all of the different musicians, had a seat at the table, that they were represented in the work that the city of Chicago was doing to promote arts and culture. And that is a testament to you, it is a testament to your department, it is a testament to the greatness of this city. So, thank you so much. You know, sometimes I think as aldermen, we hear about all the bad things that departments are doing, or we think about all the deficiencies in the ways that departments interact with us or are felt in our wards. And in the case of your department, it was always just such a joy to hear about all of the different things that your department, through your leadership, was bringing to the residents of the city of Chicago. So, thank you. Your retirement is very well-deserved and very well-earned, and I'm sure we will continue to see you being a champion for our great city and for the arts and culture in our wonderful metropolis on the lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution? I stand with this body and all of the wonderful comments that have been made, which are true and well-deserved. I want to emphasize to folks that even in the height of the pandemic, Commissioner Kelly's vision never faltered. He persevered. When venues closed and events were canceled, he reimagined our city's most beloved traditions and kept attendees safe, and brought events like Taste of Chicago, our many music festivals and other festivities online to support our restaurants and artists during such a difficult time. Commissioner Kelly also introduced a number of new and exciting events, such as Taste of Chicago in the Neighborhoods, which a number of you referenced, as well as Meet Me on the Mile and Sunday on State Street, to further highlight our restaurant and arts and culture scene, as well as revitalize city's critical commercial corridor. One of the biggest lessons that we learned during the first year living with the pandemic is that the recovery of our arts and culture scene is critical to the recovery of our city. That's why we join myself and Commissioner Kelly and the team at DCase and work together to launch the Creative Workers Relief Fund. Too many of our artists who are gig, part of the gig economy, had to leave, take on other work that detracted from their ability to really pursue their passion because of the financial hardship brought by the pandemic. So, this fund was stood up to provide support to artists and other creatives whose incomes were impacted by the pandemic. And Mark, I think your greatest legacy, and there are many facets of it, but your greatest legacy to the city is creation of Art 77, a citywide arts recovery and reopening plan that leveraged over $60 million and deepened our city's investment in the creative sector by allowing us to provide grants to artists and cultural organizations. This has been a godsend to help these artists to recover and arts organizations, not just the high arts, not just the big downtown institutions, but neighborhood institutions as well. We support the creation of new public art projects. And Commissioner Kelly has truly set DCase on a path forward. He groomed and supported our new Commissioner, Aaron Harkey. And the sky is the limit for I think what DCase can do. And always, they will be standing on the shoulders of the foundation that you built. And so, I join with members of this body and thank you for your sacrifice, for your hard work and your diligence during these particularly difficult last couple of years. We wish you nothing but joy in your retirement. I'm glad that you're able to spend time with your kids and your grandchildren. And I expect we'll see you holding court at the drum set somewhere in a venue near us. So, God bless, and thank you so much for all that you've done for our city. Thank you. Yes, sir. Let me do this. There are a number of members who came in after the initial forum call. If you were one of them, please notify the clerk so that your attendance can be noted. Alderman Madonato, Alderwoman Harrison, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Burke, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, any others that we missed? Hannah, do you have Taylor? Do you have Taylor? Okay. All right. Anyone else? All right. Our next resolution marks International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And again, we will not read the entirety of the resolution, but we do have a number of guests that I want to recognize. In the box is Noah Kruichshank from the Illinois Holocaust Museum, Dr. Danny Cohen, co-chair of the Illinois Holocaust and Genocide Commission, Lonnie Nasatier, president of the Jewish United Fund, Rabbi Shlomo Soroka, Rabbi Toshana Conover, and Israel Stark, a Holocaust survivor who will address the body. Mr. Stark? You need to take yourself off mute, sir. There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My heartfelt thanks and appreciation to the Honorable Mayor Lightfoot of Chicago, my alderman Deborah Silverstein, and this great council of representatives of the city of Chicago for allowing me to say a few words on this Holocaust remembrance. My name is Israel Stark. I was born in Czechoslovakia in 19, the year of 1929. I come from a family of three sisters, and I was the youngest and the only son in my family. I have been a Chicago resident since 1948. I'm also a Holocaust survivor of four concentration camps, Auschwitz, Mauthausen, Melk, and Ebensay. Unfortunately, survivors in this tragic period are diminishing rapidly. I give thanks daily to the Hakadosh Baruch, the Almighty God, that he has granted me the health and memory to recall the tragic period. And speak now to my fellow Chicagoans, residents of this city that is so dear to me. I will remember my family being forcibly and brutally rounded up in my small town of Pozhorjan, being held in subhuman conditions in a brick factory for three weeks, and then crammed into dark, suffocating cattle cars, where conditions were so inhuman that many died en route to the camps. As the freight train came to a screeching halt in Auschwitz-Birkenau, amidst the reverberating command of "Aussteigen, aussteigen, schnell, schnell," out, out, quickly, quickly, my loving mother motioned to me and held me back long enough to put additional clothing of me from her bundle. And I asked mother, "Why are you doing this?" And she says, "Because I have to leave everything here on this platform near the train, and maybe just what you will have on your person, you'll be able to keep." A halflink, a prisoner who was in charge of processing the new arrivals, he approached us for the second time, agitatedly insisting to exit the car, the freight car, at once. Suddenly, he looks at me, he says in Yiddish, "Yingale be al bistu," young man, how old are you? And I reply, "I am 14." "Fersen," and he says, "No, you are not 14 anymore. You are now 18 years. You are now, remember, you are 18 years old." As the time for selection approached, and they asked me, the German officer asked me, "How old are you?" "We al bistu," and I replied in a loud voice, stretching myself out, I said, "18." And he motioned, "I should go to my left, following my father." My father got separated from me weeks later during a forced march. He too did not survive. The designs of the Nazis were both to dehumanize and to exterminate groups to whom they felt superior, primarily Jews, but also gypsies, homosexuals, the disabled, and political prisoners. The primary sin of these individuals, mercilessly and viciously murdered, was simply that they were seen as others. In today's climate of rising virtual antisemitism and divisiveness, who's us to remember that even the most ostensibly civil society can fall to the lowest point and throw our own humanity and that of our fellow citizens to the wind? I am a living witness to the atrocities so-called civilized man is capable of. On this day of remembrance, we honor the memory of those who were imprisoned, tortured, and murdered, my own father and mother, and of course, my aunts, uncles, and cousins among them. We honor them, not primarily by the words we speak and the principles we espouse, but rather by the truth and virtues we demonstrated by the caring actions of we take. On this Holocaust Remembrance Day, I ask you, my fellow brothers and sisters in Chicago and beyond, will you care enough to ensure that of the Holocaust I can truly beset never, never again? Thank you very
The Chair recognizes Alderman Silverstein.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of this resolution, and I thank you, Mr. Stark, for being here with us today and for your moving and meaningful words. Tomorrow will mark 77 years since the Soviet Army liberated the Auschwitz concentration camp, freeing more than 6,000 prisoners. We commemorate this event with International Holocaust Remembrance Day, a day to remember those who died in the horrors of the Holocaust and to honor those who survived to rebuild. We are joined at council today by some of those survivors, brave men and women who endured the worst atrocities humanity has ever committed, but who didn't give up hope. They saw the destruction of their entire world, yet had the courage to build back a life, a family, and a community. The 50th Ward and the entire city of Chicago are eternally grateful for your heroism and your faith. The point of Holocaust Remembrance Day is to honor those who survived, to remember those we lost, and to join together around the globe with one voice and say, "Never again." Never again will we allow evil to overpower good and hate to overcome kindness and decency. Never again will the world stand by while antisemitism and bigotry grow and spread like a cancer. Tragically, antisemitism is on the rise. We all watched in horror this month as a rabbi and congregants were held hostage in their own synagogue in Texas. Poway, Pittsburgh, and other Jewish communities across the world have seen attacks, terrorism, and antisemitic incidences. This has to stop. We need to come together as a nation and say, "Never again will we allow Jews to be victims for their religious beliefs." I represent Chicago's 50th Ward, which houses the largest Jewish community in the state of Illinois. Like many Jewish, like any Jewish community, the 50th Ward remains haunted by the memory of the Holocaust. Step into one of our synagogues, and you will see men and women with numbers on their arms branded into their flesh by Nazi persecutors like cattle. Walk down our streets, and you won't find a family that didn't lose a grandparent, uncle, aunt, or any other loved one to the Nazis' attempt at genocide. I, a Jewish woman myself, had 19 great aunts and uncles, and only two survived. As we wrap ourselves up today to avoid the freezing cold outside, try to imagine the starved and beaten concentration camp inmates huddling together for warmth against the bitter Polish winter, dressed only in rags without coats to keep them from freezing. The best way to honor those who perished is to keep their memory alive. Learn about the struggles of those who survived and the horror of those who died. Illinois has one of the world's best Holocaust museums just a few minutes outside of the city in Skokie. Visit them to hear from survivors, interact with holograms, and make the stories real for you. I can assure you that Holocaust Remembrance Day is very real for the residents of the 50th Ward. It's very real for the survivors joining us today, and it's very real for all the people coming together this week to say "never again" to hatred, intolerance, and bigotry. Madam President, after all the speakers here today, I ask that we please take a moment of silence and that we pass this resolution with a rising vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think I can improve on what Alderman Silverstein has said. She and I are the only two Jewish elected officials in Chicago today, in Chicago City Government today. Certainly, we are represented in other parts of the government. And, but because of that, I think we have a special responsibility to make sure that the horrors of the Holocaust are not somehow appropriated, certainly not by anyone in this room, but by other people in our state, federal, and sometimes in some organizations here in the city, are appropriated for reasons of other than what actually happened there. The people on the screen today were but children, teenagers, when the Holocaust happened. They weren't even really adults, as you heard, because those are all the people who have survived. And yet, today, we know that in the popular media and on the internet, there are people who somehow compare efforts in our country to do things that are saving lives, try to convert them into something of a political movement that was used to consciously murder millions of people. It is that kind of deception that all of us must continue to resist. Because when you make one of the most horrible events in the history of mankind into something stupid, banal, and not reflective of what really happened, is when evil is given another opportunity to occur. So, today marks the day that, as Alderman Silverstein said, the Russians liberated the first, was the first concentration camp to be liberated. It took other forces, other times, to reach these other concentration camps and liberate them. And for the first time, the world had to see what was happening to their fellow man because no one could believe it. I think there are others in this room who understand what it is like when horror is seen for the first time because it's seen in a because it’s seen in a picture or a video, to know that bad things happen to people that we have a hard time understanding. So I hope that the Holocaust is remembered for that point. That is, when horrible things happen to other people, we have to, we should believe it because it has happened. But we cannot let the Holocaust be appropriated for uses that try to divide the country and turn it into an event that may be related to happen. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to be associated with this resolution. I had the honor of visiting Israel in 2016 and actually visiting the Holocaust Museum in Israel. And I would encourage my colleagues to, at some point, if they can, make it down to Skokie to see the Illinois Holocaust Museum. And if invited to Israel as part of a delegation, take the trip, can. I just wanted to read a quick quote from Audrey Zalle, Director General of UNESCO. Quote, “Whenever this history is questioned, whenever violence is done to the memory of the victims, the rise of antisemitism and hate speech is encouraged. An everyday scourge of Jewish communities around the world, more than ever, we must therefore be vigilant. It is our shared responsibility to protect the truth and to keep alive the memories of all those who suffered under the Nazi regime, to support research and documentation that can confront the fantasies of fanatics with the reality of history, and to study and teach the Holocaust so that education may prevent antisemitism and all forms of racism.” What we’ve seen recently is a rise in antisemitism. We have to be vigilant to defeat that. Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to speak on this resolution.
Thank you, Alderman Villegas. The chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I too was able to visit the Holocaust Museum in Jerusalem, Yad Vashem. And I would encourage anybody who gets there to visit as well. But I too rise in support of this resolution in honor of Holocaust Remembrance Day. We should all take the time to collectively recall one of the darkest times in our history when over 6 million Jews were murdered. Eighty-one years ago, we turned our backs on each other by turning the blind eye to the pain of others. We allowed one of the darkest chapters to unfold. We should never forget the consequences of inaction. We should never forget what those that propagate fear are capable of doing, especially when we don’t speak up. Some of today’s rhetoric is eerily reminiscent of the past. Let us never forget how these things, no matter how innocuous they may seem, can lead us to a darker place. We only have to look at the events of the Holocaust, of slavery, and other chapters of inhumanity. Let us never forget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The chair recognizes Alderman Ostman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Alderman Silverstein for bringing this resolution. I want to thank our guests today here and virtually for all of their work and their leadership with their communities, the Jewish community. It’s critical that we remember those that were lost and those who came and rebuilt their lives in Chicago and throughout the world. Many came to Chicago and made our city what it is today. In our community in Edgewater, I had a rabbi, Rabbi Herman Schallman, who came and got out before the Holocaust but was here to be a place to support those who suffered there and their families and helped rebuild. But he also worked with other denominations. He’s one example. There are many that are in Chicago today in the suburbs and in Illinois and around our country. And we have to think of the pain, the challenge that they have gone through, but also what they have done to make sure that this was never forgotten, this tragedy, and the 6 million Jews that were murdered. I think it’s also critical for us to understand that it’s important to remember moving forward because we are at a time of division in our country. We are at a time where we see rising antisemitism and rising racism and rising acts against Asian-Americans and others. And we have to speak out to make sure that that division is squelched and that we are unified people and that hate is answered with support and love and tolerance. But we have to be vigilant on that front. So I rise in support of this resolution today and the work that we have ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. 1982, 40 years ago, I went to Jerusalem and saw the Holocaust Museum. It was a life-changing event. I went to Jerusalem because I was joining the Franciscan order. And so after that trip, I moved to Detroit. And I got in trouble some because I would sneak, I was a Franciscan monk, and I was sneaking over to the Detroit’s Jewish Community Center to do Israeli folk dancing. They didn’t like it. But the dance instructor, who is also my dance partner, was Sunny Siegel. Sunny Siegel was born in Belgium, but her family moved to Holland. She was just around, I believe, around two years of age when her family was taken to the camp. She told me a lot of horror stories. One of her biggest memories was being in a bunk bed with her mom and a child, an infant, fell. And the infant just fell apart, just broke like a doll. And the mom, her mom, placed her hands over Sunny’s mouth so that she wouldn’t make a noise. Sunny remembers eating rotten potato soup. It was actually soup made of potato skins, not potatoes. And she would wander around the camp to eat newspaper scraps. My father-in-law served in World War II, and he remembers clearly going to the camps to releasing some of the prisoners. And he was stunned at the horror that he saw. Many of the camp survivors were unable to walk. They couldn’t even leave the camp to be liberated because they were so weak. The fact of the matter is, this can happen again. And so we have to remember this. And we have to realize that if we don’t act and work together, not only as a city and as a country, but as citizens of this planet, we are doomed to have this happen again. And so I stand committed with everyone to ensure this does not happen. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the city council. Boy, that was a horrible time in American history and just hard to comprehend what happened. And I saw videos, I heard what happened, but my colleague Deborah Silverstein really, really made me, hit me to heart when she mentioned we saw people in these camps. These, they weren’t in these camps in like summertime when it was nice out and everything. These were some brutal winters. And we never saw them with coats or shoes or gloves or hats on. It was always just literally rags. And it’s just hard to comprehend how a human being could be so hateful to do what they did to another human being in those times. Thank God for Russia for what they did. Thank God for America for what we did for them. So like my other colleague said, we can never let anything like this happen again. And I just want to say one thing. I know people say stupid stuff. And recently, somebody said something really stupid, I thought, and I was talking to Deborah Silverstein about it. And I’m not going to mention his name, but he’s a former U.S. Senator, former funny man, thinks he’s funny. I don’t find him funny at all. But he is coming to Chicago to do some comedy tour. And recently, he compared America to Nazi Germany. And to me, I was talking to Deb about that, to me, that’s unacceptable to be talking like that, acting like that. So hopefully, never, nobody goes to see this so-called funny man. But I just want to say, I stand with our colleagues on the screen. I stand certainly with my colleagues who very eloquently spelled it out for us. And, you know, we see videos and war movies and everything, but I’ll never be, we’ll never understand what people went through. And I’ll never understand how she lost, I think she said she had 19 great aunts and uncles and only two left, are left survive. So with that, I just want to say, I stand and support my Jewish friends in the council and also all our Jewish residents in the city of Chicago. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. The chair recognizes Alderman Pictor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also like to rise in support of Holocaust Remembrance Day. Our Jewish neighbors, friends, and family are valued members of our society. And we must continue to defend our communities against antisemitism everywhere. It is a reminder that fascists cannot be appeased. They must be defeated by all people of goodwill, united by love, to stand against genocide, bigotry, and exploitation. I echo my colleague Alderman Silverstein and encourage all our colleagues, if they haven’t done so, and all people of Chicago to visit the Holocaust Museum just north in Skokie and learn how we can fight for a future without genocide and learn about the reality of what happened in Europe under fascist rule. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to our colleague Alderman Silverstein, really for putting it so eloquently but really having the opportunity to share with us not only what it was, but what it felt like. I think, thinking about the cold that we have here and how people had to survive through it, is something that hits us at a different level because of the day that we’re having. And I wanted to thank all of the folks that are here. I’ve been fortunate enough that I have members of my own Jewish family that are able to share stories and tell me what they’ve gone through. And it’s an example of what those small seeds of division and hate, when it goes into levels of government, can be truly terrifying. What happens when people look at other people as if they’re not human? And I think, you know, sometimes people make comments here, not here, but it’s in the city and the world, about other folks. And it comes off as like a joke or something that’s not to be taken seriously. But in those comments are those seeds that then grow. And we’ve seen what happens with that. And so I, I couldn’t even imagine having to live during those times or through that. But I want to thank each of you other survivors that are here with us because you all are the lights that have shone throughout all that darkness and remind us of what the strength of a people are. And as someone who’s been a community organizer and looking at how divided we all are, whether it’s through race, through sexual preference, through anything, when it comes to us working and organizing to try to lead to a more just society, it has been a lot of our Jewish comrades and siblings that are the fiercest fighters because they’ve lived through what that means. And so I want to make sure that as we talk through us, it never leaves our hearts and we never forget, not just because that’s the statement, but because we have you all here with us that have lived through that, to share those stories so that we may all learn and never repeat anything like that again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The chair recognizes Alderman Had.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise and to be associated with this resolution. I won’t repeat so much of what’s been echoed here, but what really struck me were some of our colleagues’ comments about the importance of history and remembrance. And I want to thank Mr. Stark for sharing, thank you for sharing your story with us, knowing that survivors are aging, knowing that the stories of that firsthand experience that you have, we’re losing people every day who have these firsthand experiences. And as we live through this time, not just in our country, but in our world, where, as some of my colleagues have mentioned, there are actually people who don’t believe the Holocaust happened. There are people who don’t believe history. There are people who deny it. And I think it is our responsibility, as we’ve taken your story here today, Mr. Stark, as we take and hear the stories of our colleagues, of our friends, our family members, to remember, to remember, right? And I know we talk about never forgetting, but when I think about remembering, it’s an active thing, right? So this is something that we should be holding, not just in our memories, but how we’re living in council, the decisions that we make, the way that we engage with our colleagues and the way that we show up to represent our city. These are the things that I’m going to be taking and remembering as we mark this Holocaust Remembrance Day. So thank you for sharing your story. And thank you to my colleague for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Alderman Had. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, members of the city council and to our guests, I too rise in support of this resolution. My colleagues have said a lot of great things we must remember. But I also think what goes with that is we also must act. Remembering is not enough. Knowing is not enough. Rising up and acting when the challenge of racism and antisemitism meet us at our doorstep is what is required. I’m not Jewish. I’m Catholic. I’m a Christian. And I tend to believe that in a dark time, I would rise up. I think many of us in this room fit the same category. But I know that sometimes people fail to meet that challenge. I know that even my own church, during the height of the Holocaust, failed to meet that challenge. Pope Pius XII was silent in the midst of such a horrific act being inflicted upon the Jewish people. And while history will debate whether that was right or wrong, I can tell you today, it was wrong. His goal to preserve Catholic life at the expense of the Jewish people was wrong. But it was a choice that he made in a moment that he did not see the long view. History allows us to see it from a different lens. And I think as we remember what transpired, as we remember the 6 million lights that were extinguished in that time, that we must remind ourselves that when action happens, we must be willing to step up. We must be willing to protect our fellow man, regardless of faith, but compelled by it, even if it means our own lives may be in jeopardy. That, I think, is the lesson that is not shared often enough when this discussion happens. This wasn’t a Jewish problem. This was a human problem in how it treated its Jewish brothers. At that time, faith turned its back on its brother. We can never allow that to happen again. And as we prepare for Yom Hashoah, excuse me if I said that correctly, we must incorporate that with our own Christian faith for many in this room, the role that we would play when the darkness rears its head again. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Roboyos.
Thank you, Madam President. It’s very hard to sit here and listen to what’s been said regarding the Holocaust. I want to thank our Jewish friends for speaking on this matter today, in particular, our two colleagues today, in particular our two colleagues who spoke very eloquently about this issue. Several years ago, my colleague, Teleferro and I went to Auschwitz. And we were never the same when we left that institution. And I will never forget what I saw and who I spoke to. We were also asked to speak to family members in a war-torn Jewish cemetery. And, you know, what do you say to these folks? I was there, there was a couple hundred folks there at that cemetery, grandkids talking about their lives, their families' lives. And it's, and as I said earlier, understanding, we don't know, but we understood. And we understand a little more today of what the Jewish people went through. And, and I, we can never forget this, ladies and gentlemen. This is something that'll live forever with me. I brought a couple of books home that was given to me by Rabbi Michael Schumacher, who spoke excellent English, obviously. But it was an education, an education that we will never forget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rebios. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to be associated with this resolution. I want to thank my colleague Alderman Silverstein for bringing this in for her words, and also to my colleague Alderman Michelle Smith for her words. This was a very dark time in our, in our history, the world's history. And I believe that the memory of the Holocaust must be locked into our national consciousness. The memory of slavery must be locked into our national consciousness, and that we have to work very hard to overcome the base human nature that men and women seek to marginalize people of difference, whether you're different in religion, or different in race, or different in your sexual orientation. We must find ways to love each other and respect each other and get along with each other. This is a world that we are all here to live in together. And when we see injustice, we have to speak out against injustice. And I think it's very important that we celebrate and acknowledge the Holocaust Memorial Day so that this does not happen again. And I would encourage everyone, if you ever get an opportunity to go to Washington DC and to visit the Holocaust Museum, do so. I went and thought that I would be in there for an hour. I was literally in that museum for eight hours. And after you go through the museum, I think it's very important that you sit and listen to the testimonies of all of the survivors and hear their stories of pain and anguish and loss and grief and fear. And you walk out of there, you're not going to be the same. And so Deborah, thank you for doing this today. And thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Alder Woman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, I want to echo some of the statements that have been made by members and primarily that of Alderman Silverstein. And the one point and, you know, Ray Lopez and I don't agree on much, but I will say that we must not only take the point of remembrance, but the point of action. And as Alderman Dow said, the disdain of slavery and the marginalization of differences amongst communities, the black plight literally is parallel to the plight of the Jewish community as we both have had certain tragedies in life. And I'm always reminded, my grandmother is from West Tallahatchie County in the state of Mississippi, and talked about how that, growing up and the life and how that worked and to hear the same type of stories, same story, just a different face. And not only must we remember these things, because if we don't, we're bound to repeat them. So again, thank you for bringing this forward. And again, we must work collectively so that we do not relive these experiences in present-day America. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair, thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution. And first, I want to thank Mr. Stark for speaking about his experience as a young man in the camps. And when he was speaking, I was thinking about what it would be like for my children if we had to go through something similar. And when I was in high school, I'd lived in Germany for a year. And I remember asking people, older, older people, why had this happened? Why did they let this happen? And I was only 16, but I, I recall a lot of the responses are similar to what we hear from people today, was that they simply closed their eyes to it. They didn't want to believe what was happening in their own country. And so they didn't stand up to the people that were doing this thing, not all of them, some of them did, but not all, and not in the numbers that they should have. And so when we see this happening, not just 77 years ago, when the Soviets walked into Auschwitz and liberated that camp, but we look back just in the 1990s to what happened in the Balkans with the ethnic cleansing there. And as Alderman Irvin said, we can look back even further about what happened in our country. And I think, listening to what Mr. Stark said, what Alder Woman Silverstein said, and said, and Alder Woman Smith, I heard the comment, evil should not be given another opportunity. And I think that's the most important thing here. And I think that refrain has been heard in this council many times before. Each one of us as a group, working together as a group, has stood up against race, racism, prejudice, and the bad things that have happened in, not only in our country, but throughout the world. And I was encouraged to hear or get a phone call from the police during the events at Colleyville, to know that they were prepared for something that might happen here. And I think that shows good leadership on the part of our department to be prepared for these types of incidents here. I think the most preparation we can do, though, in my mind, is to, listening to Mr. Stark, prepare our children, prepare our children for what will happen again someday somewhere. And to teach them that it's important to stand up against these evils and against these prejudices and start early. It's never too early to start with our children. And when I think about my two young boys and teaching them about my experiences in the Balkans with ethnic cleansing and the experiences of Mr. Stark and so many millions of Jews, not only here in Chicago, but throughout the world, and sharing those experiences and teaching them that they must stand up too. Yes, we're the adults and we're standing up today, but we've got to spread that message and make sure that the racism that violates people, that permeates our society here as well, is eradicated as best we can to prevent it in the future. So I stand in full support of this resolution. I appreciate all the comments that you made today, Alder Woman, both of you experiencing that with your families, and to stand together with you as we have done as a council in the past on so many of these issues. Stand strong with people and remember those who lost their lives on this day. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Wagasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too stand in support of this resolution. I'm incredibly grateful for Alderman Silverstein and Alderman Smith for sharing their, their words and sentiments today. Also, very grateful to my neighbor and colleague Alderman Silverstein for introducing this resolution and for sharing your story with us today. I'd also like to thank the folks that have joined us virtually and in the box. I've had the privilege of working with several of you, and I can assure you, I will continue to work with you as we move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. Any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution?
I stand with the entire by the council to also speak to this resolution. And I want to thank the members who spoke today. We heard many poignant, beautiful and heartfelt testimonials and calls to action. Tomorrow, January 7th marks the day Auschwitz was liberated and the world saw for the first time the horrors of a Holocaust laid bare. From that day forward, we made two profoundly sincere promises, never again and never forget. Phrases that urge us to acknowledge and remember all who perished during the Holocaust. Today we honor the millions of Jewish and other victims who suffered at the hands of the broody, brutal and ruthless Nazi regime and its enablers, who committed atrocities in the name of hatred and antisemitism. Since the liberation of Auschwitz, survivors and supporters have worked to ensure that we truly never forget and continue to fight to make sure that this kind of atrocity never happens again. I want to thank and acknowledge our Jewish friends who are here with us today, and also virtually, the rabbis and representatives joining us from the Illinois Holocaust and Genocide Commission, the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center, and the Jewish United Fund, as well as Mr. Stark, who we are beyond grateful for taking the time to share his thoughts and remembrances and experiences as a survivor. And I commend to all of you his book entitled, "A Boy Named 68818." We are fortunate to have these leaders working both in the city and the surrounding area to ensure that we all continue to bear witness to what unabated hate leads to. I want to thank you all personally for everything that you do. I'd love so much to take this, this opportunity to thank Alder Woman Silverstein. She's a quiet but mighty force in this council, of her always being a champion and advocate for the Jewish community here in her ward, but also across our city. Thank you, Alder Woman Silverstein. I want to encourage residents and visitors alike to pause and reflect on International Holocaust Memorial Day. We have placed a display in the lobby of City Hall, and there you can access a QR code, which will provide you with information about a new exhibit at the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center. And I really encourage you all to take advantage of this opportunity. This new virtual reality exhibit features Holocaust survivors' profiles, as well as their firsthand accounts of what life was like as they survived the camps. I highly encourage us to take time to stop by the display. In the meantime, I urge all of us to remember January 7th as its important anniversary of one of the darkest times in humanity. But I also want to recognize that antisemitism is unfortunately still alive in our community. I also want you to reflect that when members of the Jewish community go into temples to humble themselves to receive a blessing from God, they, unlike most of us, have to worry if the person walking down the aisle or the person sitting next to them is a friend or foe. That is the reality of our Jewish community every single day. I also agree with Alderman Smith that we must raise our voices when anyone tries to invoke the Holocaust or symbols of antisemitism in any way that trivializes this horrific period in humanity. If we stand silent in the face of such ignorance or hatred, make no mistake, ladies and gentlemen, we are too complicit. So we must use our voices to take action and do everything we can to stamp out antisemitism and hatred underneath it. Because ladies and gentlemen, as a woman of color, as a lesbian, if they're coming for our Jewish brothers and sisters, they're coming for me. To our Jewish brothers and sisters and our allies, we stand united with you now and forever. We must recognize this as an opportunity to acknowledge our own responsibility in taking a stand against all forms of hate in our city. Thank you.
Alderman Silverstein asked us to pause in a moment of reflection. Let's do so at this moment. Please rise. Alderman Silverstein offered a motion that we pass this resolution with a standing vote. I think you see the ladies and gentlemen of this council, all those who are able standing to support this resolution and speak with a very clear voice that we will not tolerate hate in our city, in our time. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion to, for passage of the resolution?
Madam President, I move passage of both these resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move that we return to the regular order of business.
And hearing no objections, so.
Ma'am, thank you for last month's City Council. I wanted to thank all of my colleagues for their love and tender care, especially who left the room, Alderman Beal, Alderman Napolitano, and Alderman Gardner, and especially to Alderman Coleman. Most may not know this, but I'm grateful because of all of those that assisted last month, I'm here today. I can say that I did not have a heart attack, but I did have some heart problems. But I'm grateful for all of the love that I received from my colleagues to give me their love and to protect me. Madam President, thank you for reaching out for me. That did my heart so afterwards, after I saw that on television, it just, you never know what God will place in your life. So I'm grateful for each and every one of you all. Because of you, I stand here. Because of your faith, I stand here today as well. Thank you all so very much and God bless each and every one of you.
Next up on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is communications. Madam Clerk.
Communications from our Honored the Mayor, the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing issuance of up to $20 million in tax exempt housing revenue bonds for the Auburn-Gresham Apartments Development. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance to Covenant Apartments LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing financial assistance in the veins of City Council Land RS Affordable LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing financial assistance and associated sale of city-owned land to 63rd and Maryland LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Park District to provide TIF funding for improvements at various parks. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class 6B SCR tax status for property located at 4747 and 4801 South Kedzie Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here the resolution to affirm the city's support for the independence of sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. Your favorable consideration of this resolution will be very much appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing to transfer 17 lots from Revere Community Housing Development to Habitat for Humanity Chicago for affordable housing development. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the acquisition of property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sales of the owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, the Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Riley, an ordinance amending the municipal code, to add two new outdoor cafes with local license at Millennium Park. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Section 10-8-335 Municipal Code regarding the permitting of outdoor special events. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, I transmit here with a 2022 DK's Annual Program and Events Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Andrea Telly as the Commissioner of the Chicago Park District for a term effective immediately and expiring April 25, 2023, to complete the unexpired term of Avis Lavelle, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments at various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here appointments to Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. I C D Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed by my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Mayoral Executive Order Number 2021-4 declaring operational emergency due to global supply chain crisis and authorizing chief procurement officer to negotiate, execute, and modify existing contracts up to $1 million. General Certification of City of Chicago Regarding RBC Capital Markets LLC. Royal Bank of Canada Line of Credit Agreement and Note in Amount Not to exceed $250 million. Determination Certification of City of Chicago Regarding Revolving Line of Credit Agreement with RBC Capital Markets LLC and Royal Bank of Canada as noted as note dated December 29, 2021, aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $250 million. General Certificate of City of Chicago Regards Wells Fargo Bank National Association Line of Credit Agreement and Note in Amount Not to exceed $250 million. Determination Certificate of City of Chicago Regarding Wells Fargo Bank National Association as a note of December 29, 2021, an aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $250 million. Notification of Sales City of Chicago Sales Tax Bonds Securities 2021 and 2021 P and Office Inspector General's 2022 Outlook on Chicago Police Department Oversight and Accountability and Office Inspector General's Quarterly Report for Period ended December 31, 2021. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council as the regular meeting held on December 15, 2021, were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on January 26, 2022, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the general proceedings of the Council City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that ordinances authorizing imposition of tax levies, approval of the budget, and execution of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 1-2015, 710, 1318, 23, 29-2014, 31, 32, 33, 39, sorry, 32, 39, 42, 47, 50, 51, 52, 2021, 55, 56, 60, 63, 64, 69, 72, 73, 76, 77, and 79 were passed by the City Council December 15, 2021, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form or published in special pamphlet form, number 15 and 16, 2021. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications to particular areas which refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks Building Standards and Claims Against City of Chicago which refer to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of South Beth Warner House, 631 North Central Avenue, a Chicago landmark which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks Building Standards. That concludes the mayor's report.
Mayor's communication. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, are committee reports. We'll start with Committee on Finance. Chairman Weggus back.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on January 24, 2022. Item number one is a communication recommending the approval of the designation of the 2022 municipal depositories for the City of Chicago. The item received favorable approval by the committee, and unless someone wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada votes aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell votes aye. Alderman King. Alderman King votes aye. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston votes aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris votes aye. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal votes aye. Alderman Slavsky Garza. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson votes aye. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas votes aye. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn votes aye. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke votes aye. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez votes aye. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman votes aye. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore votes aye. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea votes aye. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor votes aye. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins votes aye. Aldman Rodriguez. Aldman Rodriguez votes aye. Aldman Tabarez. Aldman Tabarez votes aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott votes aye. Alderman Secho Lopez. Alderman Secho Lopez votes aye. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado votes aye. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett votes aye. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin votes aye. Alderman Talafiero.
Aye.
Alderman Talafiero votes aye. Alderman Roboyas. Alderman Roboyas votes aye. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona votes aye. Alderman Wagaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin votes aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes aye. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas votes aye. Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits votes aye. Alderman Spazardo.
Spazardo, a yes.
Alderman Spazardo votes aye. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent votes aye. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez votes aye. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano votes aye. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley votes aye. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith votes aye. Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony votes aye. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner votes aye. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Kapelman votes aye. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin votes aye. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman votes aye. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Haddon votes aye. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein votes aye.
The ayes are 49, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
The motion for reconsideration fails. Thank you. Chairman Weggus back.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to issue multifamily revenue bonds or debt instruments to B.J. Wright Preservation LP and B.J. Wright G.P. LLC for the Barbara Jean Wright Court Project Acquisition and Renovation of Various Residential Buildings Between Maxwell Street, Morgan Street, 14th Place, Racine Avenue, and Blue Island Avenue in the 25th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to establish the City of Chicago Single Family Mortgage Credit Certificate Program Series 2022 and associated City of Chicago Single Family Mortgage Credit Certificates Series 2022. The item received favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to amend Municipal Code Sections 2-8-065, 14A-3-313, 14A-3-313.1, and 14A-3-313.6 regarding waiver of city debt for distressed residential and mixed-use properties enrolled in community revitalization and reoccupancy programs. This item received favorable approval by the committee, and unless someone wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is a communication recommending a proposed amended ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing or TIF funds in the amount of $329,800 for upgrade, repair, and recertification of obsolete building environmental and mechanical systems at Eric Solario Academy High School, located at 5400 South St. Louis, also known as 3500 West Norman R. Bobbins Place in the 14th Ward. This ordinance was amended to accurately describe the street address. The item did receive favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of $3.8 million for replacement of mechanical systems at Irma C. Ruiz Elementary School, located at 2410 South Levitt Street in the 25th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of $4.25 million for the full roof replacement of the main annex building at Spencer Elementary Technology Academy, located at 214 North Laverne Avenue in the 28th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with clerk. Items nine and 10 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denial of payment of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 11 is an order authorizing two tag day permits for Mercy Home for Boys and Girls and for the American Civil Liberties Union. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And items, item 12, A through D, is four proposed orders authorizing Corporation Council to execute settlement agreements or settlements in the case of Gray Aaron Holt versus City of Chicago, Lorna R. Bonds versus City of Chicago, Kevin Bailey and Corey Bachelor versus City of Chicago, and Dewan Harris versus City of Chicago. Item 12A was approved by the committee by a roll call vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell is an aye. Alderman King. Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston is an aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal. Aye, no. Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Slavsky Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is a, oh, Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Secho Lopez. Secho Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Roboyas. Roboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a no. Alderman Wagaspack. Wagaspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is a yes. Alderman Mits. Mits is a yes. Alderman Spazardo. Spazardo is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tony. Tony is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke is a yes. Any others I missed?
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate that this is a time for folks to get together and have conversation, but I'd ask you to please keep your conversations to a low volume so that we can continue with the business of the council. The ayes are 41, the nays are seven. The matter passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Weggus back.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm going out of order on this for everyone's notice here. We're going to item 12C. 12C is the settlement for Mr. Bailey and Mr. Bachelor. They spent a collective 43 years in prison when they were wrongfully convicted. This item was approved by a committee by a roll call vote, and if no one wished to speak on the matter, I move passage by a roll call vote in the council.
Alderman Laspada. Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dowell. Dowell is a yes. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a yes. Alderman Slavsky Garza. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardenas. Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke. Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Sichu Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett, Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Raguspack. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the yays are forty-nine, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
I move that we reconsider the last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All opposed say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguspack.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, item twelve D on the agenda, this is Dewan Harris versus City of Chicago in the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, was approved by the committee by a roll call vote. If no one wished to speak on the matter, I move passage by a roll call vote. Correct, I did say D as in whatever you want.
It's D. It's D as in David.
D as in David.
Madam Clerk.
I don't want to offend any-
All right, let's do it again. Alderman Laspada. Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a no. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardenas. Cardenas is a no. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a nay. Nope. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Sichu Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a no. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is a no. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman's a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a no.
The ayes are thirty-one, the eighteen's are nay, sorry, nays are eighteen. The matter passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion for reconsideration.
I move for reconsideration, reconsideration of that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguspack.
Thank you, Madam President. Item twelve B, twelve B, ladies and gentlemen, was Lenora Bonds versus City of Chicago in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. This item was not approved by the committee during a roll call vote that resulted in a thirteen-thirteen vote. Under Rule forty-four of our Rules of Order, no full council action is needed, and a recommendation of do not pass is automatically accepted. Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Waguspack. We're going to go out of order and call on next Chairman Viegas on the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through nine are various special service area appointments and reappointments collectively voted for the following special service areas. Reappointment of Robert B. Smith to SSA number eight Lakeview East Commission located in forty-fourth and forty-six wards. Reappointment of Frank J. Caputo to SSA number sixteen Greek Town Commission located in twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, and forty-second wards. Reappointment of A. Thomas Aspalas to SSA number sixteen Greek Town Commission located in twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, forty-second wards. Reappointment of G. Anne Del Yature to SSA number seventeen Central Lakeview Commission located in forty-fourth and forty-six wards. Appointment of Renee N. Lebrana, SSA number nineteen Howard Street Commission located in the forty-ninth ward. Appointment of Anthony Beach to SSA number sixty-one Hyde Park Commission located in the fourth and fifth wards. Appointment of Shaka H. Mitchell to SSA number sixty-one Hyde Park Commission located in the fourth and fifth wards. Appointment of Richard Pennabom, SSA number seventy-five Oak Street Commission located in the forty-second ward. Appointment of Duke Miglin to SSA number seventy-five Oak Street Commission located in the forty-second ward. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Chairman, Madam Chair, item ten is an ordinance in support of a Class C tax status renewal for property located at forty-five thirty-five West Armagedge Avenue introduced by Mayor Lightfoot at the December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one City Council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eleven is a resolution calling on the City of Chicago to expedite the goal of an all-electric fleet to new date twenty-thirty-five that I introduced during the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one City Council meeting. After careful consideration and research, I decided instead to hold a subject matter hearing to provide an opportunity for committee members to better understand why fleet electrification is necessary and learn from national leaders in the fleet electrification space. Committee members, the committee members received the substitute resolution prior to the meeting, calling for the subject matter hearing, which was then followed by passage of such resolution. I want to thank the committee and council members who attended, everyone who participated and contributed to the hearings, huge success, especially our guest speakers, Iyana Simba at the Illinois Environmental Council, Dr. Elizabeth Koche, Director of Partnerships and Strategy of the UIC Energy Initiative at the University of Illinois at Chicago, Brian Brzezuski, Director of Environmental Health Programs at Respiratory Health Association, Keith Kerman, Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services for the, and New York City's first chief fleet officer, Rebecca Kirinen, Principal Resilience Planner for the City of Pittsburgh Sustainability and Resilience Division at the Department of City Planning, Mike Menyard, President of America, and Chief Strategy Officer at Sea Electric, John Wozniak, Chief Financial Officer at Arrival. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and reconvened on January twenty-fifth. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one, an ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year twenty-twenty-one regarding CTA real property transfer tax fund increase. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Ray Lopez voting no on this item.
So noted the no vote. Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number two, an ordinance introduced by Alderman Michelle Harris, eighth ward, approving the transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on Rules for the year twenty-twenty-one. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection. This concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Chairman Sawyer.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting on your Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a remote meeting on January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. The committee recommends passage of the following items. The first is approval of fourteen appointments or reappointments as members of the Chicago Commission on Human Relations, and they are as follows. Jaime E. Brown, Edward Peacher, Daniel R. Hernandez, Darlene G. Ataya, Myrna T. Holton, Martha Serta, Ray B. Gonzalez, Thomas Choi, Ahmad R. Jitan, Ray J. Koenig III, Daniel G. Goldwyn, Margaret A. Kalugian, Michael D. Takata, Kimberly L. Waller. I move passage of these fourteen appointments by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item, fifteen zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-five-seven-two-six, is the amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter seven dash thirty-eight, by adding new section seven dash thirty-eight dash zero-six-zero, regulating which default beverage types restaurants may include with children's meals unless otherwise requested. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last three items, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, are re-referrals to other committees. R-two-zero-two, R-two-zero-two-one-dash-one-three-zero-five, call for assessment of city holdings, sale of existing investments in weapon manufacturers, and adoption of socially responsible investment policy prohibiting future investments in weapons-producing companies. Chief sponsor, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, re-referral to the Committee on Finance. The second item, number seventeen, R-two-zero-two-one-dash-one-three-zero-four, call for investment of American Rescue Act funds to install water meters and repair water leaks prioritizing low-income/underserved communities. Chief sponsor, Alderman Sichu Lopez, re-referral to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. And R-two-zero-two-one-dash-one-one-two-nine, reaffirmation of the City of Chicago as sanctuary and welcoming city to black immigrants, especially Haitian immigrants. Chief sponsor, Alderman King, re-referral to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. In accordance with our rules, I wish to be recorded as abstaining from item ten, the reappointment of Ray Koenig, as he, we are party to litigation together.
Thank you. That will be noted. Your essential will be noted in the record.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your house, your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a remote meeting on January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at thirteen-hundred North Astor Street to Twenty-four East Goths LLC in the forty-third ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call, Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Item number two is the sale of city-owned property at thirty-nine-seventy-five dash thirty-nine-seventy-seven South Drexel Boulevard in thirty-nine-eighty-one dash thirty-nine-eighty-three South Drexel Boulevard to Thirty-nine-seventy-five Drexel LLC in the fourth ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is an as-is sale of city lots under the Working Families Program to Prodigy LLC with the associated redevelopment agreement for the property at nineteen-sixteen and nineteen-twenty-seven South Troy Street, nineteen-oh-five, nineteen-fourteen, nineteen-fifteen, nineteen-nineteen, and nineteen-twenty-six South Albany in the twenty-fourth ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is a loan restructuring agreement, assignment of loan debt and city loan for the North Center Senior Housing LP to replace borrower, the Martha HHDC LLC for the project at twenty-three forty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty-three twenty-four West Irving Park Road in the forty-seventh ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and the following items were passed by the committee. Item number zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-five-two-eight-six, a substitute ordinance to amend Chapter Two of the Municipal Code regarding license and regulation of tow trucks. Mayor Lightfoot, Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one on the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-five-eight-five-nine, an ordinance to amend Section Four and Eight of the Municipal Code regarding the regulation of a secondhand dealers and pawnbrokers. This ordinance, I move passage by the same item of the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three, zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-thirty-one-oh-six, a substitute ordinance to amend Section Nine of the Municipal Code prohibiting pedicabs from using device to create or amplify sound during specific hours. Alderman Riley and Alderman Hopkins, I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
We have five ordinances regarding moratoriums in the sixteenth, twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth, and thirty-eighth ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That would conclude my report on the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before the committee, there were a hundred and seven items. There were a hundred and six routine items that passed and one routine item that did not pass. There was an ordinance introduced by Forty-second Ward, Brendan Riley, zero-two-zero-one-nine-dash-three-nine-three-six, an amendment of the Municipal Code, Section nine dash six-four dash two-oh-six, concerning parking meter hours of operation on portions of North Larabee Street, that passed. I move passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Special Events. Chairman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, before I give my report, I too would like to thank my colleagues and you, Mayor, also for well wishes. I was pretty sick for about three weeks there, so too sick to respond to most people, but thank you, everyone, for the calls, the texts, and the prayers. So with that, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, for which a virtual meeting was held on January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, the committee recommends passage of the following item. Two-zero-two-one-dash-five-eight-four-one, an expenditure of open space impact fees to reimburse the Chicago Public Schools for varied eligible exterior improvements, including storm drainage, asphalt paved basketball court, plaza area, and drinking fountain at the Oscar Meyer Elementary School at twenty-two fifty North Lipton Avenue. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, the following ordinances were passed by majority of the members present. Pages two through thirty-one include three hundred and fifty-seven ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local aldermen from wards one, two, four, five, nine, twelve through fourteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-eight through forty, forty-two through forty-five, forty-seven through fifty. On page thirty-two includes ten ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards two, four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty-two, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-seven. Page thirty-three and thirty-four includes twelve ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards three, thirteen, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-nine. On page thirty-five includes two ordinances for subdivisions introduced by the local aldermen from wards twelve and forty. If there are no further objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Workforce Development, Vice Chair Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a virtual meeting on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was one item on the agenda, ordinance twenty-twenty-one-dash-twenty-fifty-eight, amendment of form of certified service license provider agreement adopted by the City Council on September the sixth, two thousand and seventeen. A substitute ordinance, SO twenty-twenty-one-dash-twenty-fifty-eight, was accepted by the committee. The Committee on Workforce Development recommended that substitute ordinance twenty-twenty-one-twenty-fifty-eight do pass by a unanimous vote unless there are members wishing to speak on the item and hearing no objection. I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Committee on Finance and pass this item by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes the report.
All right, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And last but not least, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, Chairman Tony.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on January twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains one text amendment, document number zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-five-eight-seven-two, amendment of municipal code titles two, fourteen-A, fourteen-B, fourteen-R, and fourteen-X, and repeal of Chapter thirteen-nine regarding various technical corrections and modifications to Chicago construction codes. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through eleven contain various map amendments in the forty-ninth, forty-eighth, forty-seventh, forty-fourth, thirty-ninth, thirty-seventh, thirty-fourth, thirtieth, twenty-ninth, twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, twenty-second, twenty-first, eleven, ten, eight, six, third, second, and first wards. Before I move passage of these items, my understanding that we'll start with Alderman Mike Rodriguez on his St. Anthony zoning change in the twenty-second ward. Mike?
Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President and Chairman Tony. Colleagues, I'm proud to bring before you the St. Anthony Hospital Development at Thirty-first and Kenzie. The hospital has been in our community for several generations, provides significant amounts of charity care to our most vulnerable residents, and was recognized by the Chicago Tribune as the number-one hospital in the City of Chicago for putting COVID-19 vaccines in the arms of the people of our hardest-hit communities. The development will benefit the southwest side of Chicago as supported by an overwhelming number of residents and stakeholders throughout the southwest side who have testified in its support. This development will include the new state-of-the-art St. Anthony Hospital, community and educational opportunities, recreational spaces, and business opportunities. You know, I look forward to continuing engagement with you and our community as this project moves forward. We're very excited about this in our community. We've been working on it for a long time, and it's finally here for approval amongst you. I urge my colleagues for favorable consideration. Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez.
Madam Chair, I believe that Alderman Michael Scott would like to highlight an affordable housing project in the twenty-fourth ward.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Chairman Tony. The project that we're speaking about is the Grace Memorial Project that has been in fruition for, I believe, the last six years. It started in the last administration, and I want to give thanks to you and to the Housing Department for bringing this to the forefront. It is sixty-four units of totally affordable housing in North Longdale, a series of a lot of different things that we've done to make affordability and quality back, bring back to the twenty-fourth ward. Again, sixty-four units right on Ogden in the Invest Southwest Corridor, right across the street from the RFP that we just did, that Longdale redefined, that is also going to bring affordable housing back to the twenty-fourth ward. And so again, just wanted to highlight that, wanted to thank Pastor Hunter and Eastlake Management that have been diligent in making this happen. Again, worked for six years to bring this to fruition. It's finally here, and I want to thank you, and I want to urge my colleagues to vote favorably in this, for this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. Chairman Tony.
So I move passage of all these various map amendments by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page twelve contains two historical landmark fee waivers in the second and fourth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page twelve contains the historical landmark designation of the Little Village Arch located in the twelfth ward at thirty-one-hundred West Twenty-Sixth Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection. Page twelve contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade, in the first, fifth, eighth, twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, and forty-second wards. I move, I move, I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
In addition to the past items, on page eleven, the committee voted a do-not-pass recommendation on document number zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-six-twenty-five regarding a zoning map amendment in the second ward. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tony. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, Agreed Calendar. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I've received from the Clerk Anna Valencia a toll of sixty-nine items proposed for the Agreed Calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary, and resolutions for the following aldermen. Alderman King, Alderman Harris, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Curtis, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Robores, Alderman Austin, and Alderman Mitts. I move passage of the Agreed Calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, New Business. Madam Clerk, please call the wards, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at six-twenty-nine North Ashland Avenue, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles four and seven to regulate charitable food vendors, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman King has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Lerone Bennett Jr. Parkway, which is referred to the Committee on, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hairston has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Herman Petty Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Mitchell has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Jerry Torrey Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Harris has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of East Seventy-Nine Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Harris also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirteen-fifty-five East Ninety-Third Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Thompson has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section nine dash ninety-two dash zero eighty, to prohibit tow or storage fees for vehicles towed as a result of vehicular hijacking or theft, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Burke has proposed ordinance to call for naming of roadway from South Kenzie Avenue to South Whipple Street as West Flood Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burke and others have proposed resolution to call for Governor J.B. Pritzker to grant late Ira Hayes posthumous pardon, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman O'Shea has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West One Hundred Eleventh Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman O'Shea also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at ninety-three-oh-one South Western Avenue, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Brookins has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Lieutenant Dwayne P. Williams Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed resolution to call for the Corporation Council to release Office of Inspector General report regarding demolition of Crawford Power Plant, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Sincio Lopez has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at eleven-fourteen South Clinton Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Maldonado has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Humboldt Park Health Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Maldonado also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as New Life Covenant Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Sections four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional alcoholic liquor and package goods licenses on portions of West Kinsey Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at eleven-forty North LaSalle's Drive, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin and Alderman Sawyer have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section two dash ninety-two dash three thirty, regarding enforcement of percentages of city resident participation of socio-economically disadvantaged area work hours in construction contracts, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alderman Carradona has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West Fullerton Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Carradona also has proposed order, ordinance for an honorary street designation as Camarino Linda, Landa Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Wagaspack has proposed ordinance for approval of Wolfrum Palina North Re subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed resolution to call for the Illinois General Assembly to pass House Bill one-ten regarding overdose prevention sites, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Austin has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Elder Roosevelt McCarthy Junior Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Austin also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Lieutenant Dwayne P. Williams Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section two dash ninety-two dash two sixty, regarding final payment on contracts, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters six dash one hundred and six dash one oh-five, by modifying various sections and adding a new section, six dash one hundred dash zero forty and six dash one hundred dash zero fifty, regarding procedures for payment of wages, minimum and maximum salary stated in job listings, and establishment of fines and penalties, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash four dash zero fifty, regarding license application requirements for minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, business enterprises owned or operated by people with disabilities, and veteran-owned business enterprises, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Nugent has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of North Palina Road, excuse me, North Pulaski Road, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Napolitano has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Jeffrey L. Wotel Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Napolitano also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at one, one sixteen zero one West Tuie Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Sections nine dash sixty-four dash two-oh-six, by installing parking meters and establishing hours of operation on portion of West Ohio Street, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of South Michigan Avenue and East Idaby Wells Drive, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title Two, regarding City Council Committee oversight power and to further regulate Office of Legislative Council, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Refer to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Title Four, by modifying various sections to further regulate special event retailers' licenses, special event use permits, beer showcase permits, and special event liquor licenses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for establishment of taxi cab stand on East Randolph Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the City Council Legislative Reference Bureau for the year two thousand and twenty-two, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government, Government Operations. Alderman Riley and Alderman Wagaspack have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title Four, by modifying various sections and adding new sections regarding public safety threats, summary closures, nuisance abatement hearings, business nuisances, remedial measure investigations, and procedures for alcoholic liquor licenses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley and Alderman Smith have proposed ordinance for annual appropriation ordinance year two thousand and twenty-two amendment, by modifying department name of Legislative Reference Bureau to Office of Legislative Council, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. And Alderman Tony has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for assigned signboard at three-three-three South Surf Street, or West Surf Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes all the medic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up, Approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal and move that we approve.
All right. Thank you. Next up, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am aware of three items of unfinished business that were noticed pursuant to Rule forty-one. The first two are re-referrals from the Committee on Committee and Rules. The third is a substitute ordinance regarding emergency procurement from the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. I defer to Chairman Harris and Dowell.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two re-referrals that I noticed up pursuant to Rule forty-one at the meeting on October fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one. I reported these items out from the Committee on Committees and Rules. However, these items were deferred and published and appear in the Journal of Proceedings for that date. The first is zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-one-two-two-seven, an ordinance to further regulate the automated speed enforcement system. I move approval of this recommendation, that this item be re-refered to the Committees on Finance by the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I motioned up a Rule forty-one last Thursday, and this Rule forty-one was motioned up just two days ago at approximately nine-twenty-one. Based on our rules and regulations that you stated last month at the last City Council meeting, that Rule forty-one should be submitted five days prior to City Council. The Rule forty-one that I have submitted was submitted five days prior to this City Council, and I am recommending that those two Council, and I am recommending that those two items are called for a vote by this City Council.
I'm sorry, I believe that the five-day rule pertain to matters that were subject to discharge, and I don't believe that your Rule Forty-One motions fell with, fall within that framework.
Well, I disagree, Madam Chairman. The Rule Forty-One that I stated is asking for a roll call vote up or down on the Legislative Council and our own parliamentarian, as well as the repeal of the speedlight camera that was introduced last year to take the speedlight ticket from six back to eleven. So with that, Madam Chairman, I motion for a roll call vote.
Let me, let me just make sure that I understand, and let's take them one at a time. The first one is regarding a legislative council. My, just point of information, that matter has not been to committee yet or consideration. Is that correct?
It does not have to go before committee. It has been sitting in Rules Committee since last October, I believe, maybe even September. And I motioned up a Rule Forty-One two months ago. Alderman Riley deferred and published that Rule Forty-One, and based on our rules, that anything that is deferred and published should come right back before the next City Council meeting, and that was not done. And so I motioned up another Rule Forty-One five days ago to ask for a up or down vote in this body.
So the answer to my question is yes, that this matter has not been before a substantive committee for consideration. Correct, sir?
It doesn't have to be, but you are correct.
So just to, to make sure that we're all on the same page. The five-day requirement is to discharge. The two days that notice for Chairman Harris is timely, because it's not a matter to discharge, but a matter to refer it to the committee. You have a pending request to have a roll call vote on your matter unless, as I said, for purposes of the convenience of the councils, take them one at a time. Which one would you like to?
I would like to have my motion to have this body vote on, passage or not passage, on my item in committee.
Right. I'm asking you have two items. I'm asking which one?
The first one, the first one is the, our own legal team to represent independently in this council, as well as our own parliamentarian to work independently for this body.
I'm going to address the procedure issue, but first, the Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I support Anthony Beal's effort in getting the Legislative Council for us. This is something we've been talking about for some time. I do believe that it requires, though, a full, robust debate, because we need to talk about budget, we need to talk about the staffing. I agree with my colleague very much, but I would love to have a hearing regarding it so that we can talk about the details and how this looks. And I know it's been a long time, and I know he's frustrated, and I support him in this effort a hundred percent, but I do think that we need this to be heard before a full committee. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam President. That is exactly the words that I was going to say. I believe that this particular item, which has not been debated before this council, requires some substantive debate about the duties of this council or outside council. This is going to cost us some money. We have not even discussed what the financial requirements will be for this particular position. I know that my colleague has brought this before us a number of times, and we, I think it would be inappropriate for us to vote it up or down, because we don't even know what we're voting for. So I would ask that this be re-refered to. I support the motion that is being made by my colleague Chairman Harris.
I recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Chairman Dowell. I think most of us agree with Alderman Beal's effort here. In fact, Mayor, almost two years ago, we had conversations about the need for this body to have its own independent Legislative Council. And in reviewing Alderman Beal's ordinance, I think there's a lot of good in there. And for the last three or four months, I've been working with the Legislative Reference Bureau lawyers to put a finer point and refine Alderman Beal's ideas here, without having to go to outside counsel, but by converting our own lawyers Legislative Reference Bureau into the Office of Legislative Council, and then providing them some supplementary funding through an appropriations amendment through budget. It also very clearly defines the role of this new office as really focused on parliamentary procedure and rules of debate, et cetera. And it stipulates that these lawyers should not be advocating for or against the passage of legislation, but simply provide objective procedural support, something that all of us need, both during City Council meetings and during committee hearings. And so this is an ordinance I worked on with the LRB, not with the administration, and the hope is that Alderman Beal and myself and others can work together to get a good final product. I don't think anyone disputes the need. It's how we go about establishing that office and what are their parameters. I'll be circulating this new draft ordinance that was introduced today, as well as a fact sheet and another sheet that it kind of shows the differences between Alderman Beal's proposal and my own. But I think somewhere in between the two, we could have a really great solution for all of us. But as was mentioned, this requires robust committee debate and discussion. Each of us on the council have our own ideas for the office, but I just wanted to explain why I introduced what I did. It's not to take away from the work that Alderman Beal has done. I've been listening to Alderman Beal and my colleagues, and this is something that we should implement, but let's do it right. So thank you, Madam President, for your indulgence, and I would ask that this be properly referred to a committee for that debate. Thank you, President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazada.
Madam President, members of the City Council, I too support Alderman Beal and my colleagues. They basically echoed everything I had, my concerns. I just, just have some questions. I don't really want to blindly vote on anything. Alderman, I fully support you on this, but I just want to know how much we're going to budget for this, and how are we going to pick, are we going to have a committee or something to pick our, our council to represent us? So that would, that would be my only question, but I know, I mean, it's inappropriate to ask it now, but those are just some concerns I have. I fully support you, Alderman Beal, so.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Madam President, I, in hearing the conversation, it's, it's challenging to hear what some of the colleagues are saying. It's a pretty simple ask, to have independence when we talk about all the things that happened before council and committee, we've seen in the past three years, every single time somebody has something that they disagree with, that they want to get a ruling on, no disrespect to Mr. Levine or anybody else, but it kind of plays in the direction of the executive branch. And trying to ask for independence and justice in a process, and to have the answer be, how are we going to pay for it, feels to me to be a fundamental problem. There are plenty of things through budget cycles that we've done, that we voted for that still haven't been implemented. We still don't have plans on how to do those, but yet this is a conversation and argument we're making for something we've been asking for time and time again. Everyone wants to say, you know, we want to talk about it and go through it. It was dumped into rules, because people did not want to talk about it. And now, looking at how it actually ran through the process, it was dumped into rules, there's a Rule Forty-One, it was deferred and published, now that it's unfinished business, it can move forward. I know that, because the same thing happened when we were talking about CPAC and ECPS. So now that it is unfinished business, I do believe it has every right to call for a roll call, and having people vote to say, because we don't know how we're going to pay for fairness in conversation, is just something that's very hard to accept. So I just wanted to say that.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
I was just told to behave. So I, I support Alderman Beal, and sitting in this chamber over the past few years, looking at the rules being applied when it's convenient, has really caused me concern. And I have talked to most of you over the years about us having an independent council, because every time the ruling, there has never been one time when the ruling has been on the favor of anybody other, other than the mayor. We've got the same person being the judge, the jury, and all the lawyers, and we have said it time and time again, and here is somebody that introduced it, and what did we do, Alderman Riley? We deferred and published it, so it couldn't get heard. So don't stand up here and tell us that this is a conversation you didn't want to have the conversation. There is nothing that prevents us from having a council and talking about it and working all those details out, as we often do. Mayor, you call upon us all the time to pass things, and we work out the details later. So this is not unusual, but now, all of a sudden, we care, and we want to have these conversations. Either you all want somebody to have your back, or you don't. And if you don't, stand up and say it, but stop playing this game. Thank you.
Alderman Riley?
Since my name was mentioned in debate, I'd like to respond to that. Again, we can't revise history here, colleague. This has been discussed since before Mayor Lightfoot took office. Before she was sworn in, many of us have had these conversations with this mayor. So with all due respect to Alderman Beal, this is not some new idea that he cooked up. And yes, I've been participating in the parliamentary maneuvers to slow it down, because I knew I was working on a better version, I would, I would argue. And, and again, if you remember, look, I've stood up here and used parliamentary procedure to defend our authority as aldermen, dividing questions and the like. And I am someone who believes we need to have our own independent council. That is without dispute. It's how we go about doing it. And Alderman Beal's ordinance has good things in it, but it doesn't even say how we're going to pay for it. There is no appropriations amendment attached, and it doesn't even define the duties. And so I think that Alderman Beal conceptually has a good idea. I would argue the ordinance that I've submitted, and I encourage you all to read it and mark it up and make suggestion, goes a bit further. It also reinforces our ability to have subpoena powers and enforcement of those subpoena powers, something that is lacking in, in the alderman's version. So I'm not saying mine's better, I think it is, but, but my point is, we can come up with some version of Beal and my ordinance, I think, and accomplish the goal. So I'm not trying to slow this down, and again, for the record, I did not draft my ordinance with any input, counsel, or advice from the administration or the Law Department. This was done entirely on my own. So I want to make sure that's clear. This is not a false choice between reform and reform light. These are two different aldermanic introductions that do similar things, but differently. That, thank you, Madam President.
And as a point of clarification, I called on Alderman Riley again, because his name was specifically invoked by Alderman Harrisman, but we're going to move through the other people who have raised their hands who have not spoken. We won't be going back. The Chair recognizes, you want to speak now, or you want to speak at the end? You want to speak now, or speak at the end? Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, good afternoon, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of Alderman Beal. I think just in having this discussion today, we've seen where the questions of having someone independently able to answer questions with regards to our rules is needed. We've seen that in every meeting for the past six months. But I also want to state that a lot of this conversation that we're having today is filled with contradiction to my colleague's point. This council approved hundred thousand dollar aldermanic micro grants in this last budget without having a single defined way of spending that money. It might be the opposite path, but it's the same problem. Doing, jumping without knowing all the facts is something we do routinely in this body. We approved universal basic income without having the program set, but we knew what we wanted to do. This is no different. And I remind my colleagues that one thing that you all have said, and I've heard for seven-plus years in here, is that everything that we do is a living document. So we could pass Alderman Beal's ordinance today, and we could modify it tomorrow. We can find ways to make it work better, but at least this shows that we're finally serious about having a conversation to create a legal council that can advise us and help guide us when issues of our parliamentary rules come into question. For example, the reason we're here is because the Rules Committee did not report this out in October. As of right now, there are sixty-seven pieces of legislation in the Rules Committee that have bypassed the thirty-day requirement in our rules of order to be voted out. There's no one enforcing that. There's no one telling us that we are in violation of our own rules. Clearly, we need to address this matter, and we need to address it in a way that has been advocated for, and we could get to the particulars, because clearly, so many people have been concerned about this issue, but nobody has stepped up to support it, to move it out of committee, except perhaps Alderman Beal, most dedicatedly doing so every meeting. But here we are. The line's been drawn, and we have two Rule Forty Ones today, one that's properly noticed and one that's not, and even that's a matter of question. Let's get this ball rolling today. We can work the particulars, the funding, we know how to do that, but let's get the position on the books, so that we could start having these conversations concluded in a timely manner while we are in this room today. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Secho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd also like to rise in support of my colleague, Alderman Beal. I think it's clear that we all agree that we need an independent parliamentarian. But if there's indeed was an intention or willingness to have this conversation, we would have had it in the subsequent meeting back in November. We're now in January, and yet talking about the same thing. I am concerned about the division of powers and the ability of the executive branch to continue to push legislation when it's convenient for the executive branch. The legislative branch has a responsibility to legislate, to have oversight, and for that to happen, we do need to make sure that the rules are followed. That has not happened. We can hear you all day thinking about excuses, but the reality is that we continue to see ranches that continue to be falling into the processes, excuses, but no action. So it's time for the council, and with great concern, when we see reports from Inspector General, when we see reports are withheld, and many decisions that are important are going ahead, in particular, when we have to select the next Inspector General. We need to make sure that we have an independent parliamentarian. It's an urgent matter, it's a living document, as another colleague said, and this is a matter that we are all responsible for our constituents. I urge us all to take a vote and move with urgency on this important matter for the legislative branch. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, I, I have to comment on the process here, which is that, having been a veteran of some very tight City Council fights on, on independence and ethics reform, I remember that when, led by Alderman Wagaspack, we fought to get an independent Inspector General who had authority over City Council. We called every single alderman, we rounded up cosponsors, we went the fight through committee, and then to a very closely divided City Council vote, which we lost by, I think, one or two votes. When we did COFA, having an independent council Office of National Analysis with cosponsor and leader Alderman Pat Dowell. and leader Alderman Pat Dow, we called a lot of people, tried to build support, tried to understand what was necessary to be done. Now, I haven't gotten a call from Alderman Beal, I don't know how many of you had, to discuss the substance of what is being discussed. When I saw Alderman Beal's ordinance, I, I did look at it and I had problems with it because it appears to allow liability to attach to the city for things that we do in city council based on the authority of this outside independent lawyer, which I have problems with as a fiduciary for the city. But Alderman Beal really, and, and as the proponent, as, as we all know, the proponent of an ordinance really bears the burden of collecting the responses and the support of his ordinance. And with, with real, real respect to Alderman Beal for feeling passionate about this issue, he hasn't done any of that, at least with regard to me. And I don't tend to want to support things that haven't been vetted and that just want to use this sort of showcase, even when you've been put down and had procedural issues, it's happened to many of us, I'm sure including me. And so, you know, it, it sort of strikes me as a wanting to have your way because you want to have your way right now. And I'm a little distressed that some of our colleagues who might not know that there really actually might be a problem with the ordinance are just saying, well, let's just vote. So I'm, yes, it's been hard. Yes, there have been roadblocks and I appreciate that. It's happened to me and others. But at this point, through this very, very bizarre last couple of years we've had with crime, social unrest that needed attention and support, COVID and a variety of other things, it is now going to committee. We also have an excellent alternative in what Alderman Riley has brought forward, which I have asked to be a cosponsor of. And I think that we ought to give it its consideration. And so that is why I do not support the efforts to pass the law today. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Smith. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Colleagues, um, conversation and debate, I think we went through the same thing when we run, when it's great COFA. We disagreed with budget, we wanted our own analysis or our own teams analyze. And I, I don't, I've been here almost 20 years, I, I don't see the difference, to be honest with you. I mean, we, all the things that were requested from COFA, we could have gotten from budget. Now, not to say that my colleague Beal's wrong, right, I think he deserves to be heard. This is a deliberate body, we're here to listen, we're here to enact legislation, we're here to collaborate and work with one another, not to impede, to hear, to proceed and to act. So I'm for that. But there needs to be debated, not just adding costs to taxpayers. When we figure out that we finally put enough staff to trim the trees, put enough staff to get the snow removed and the garbage picked up and enough police officers to roam the streets and keep it safe, until we figure that out, I'm not moving on any more bureaucratic expenses to the taxpayers. That's what we ought to be talking about first and foremost. That's why we're here. Taxpayers want us to serve them and protect them. That's why I'm here. I don't mind debating, and we should debate all day long, but at the end of the day, vote it up or down, that's fine with me, I'm ready to vote. Until, I'll tell you, but I won't know because until we have a debate on what that expense means, COFA, what is, what exactly we're getting out of COFA? Except an, an analysis that you already know that you could have gotten from budget or from any commissioner that you would have called and say, I need a report on 301 services in my ward and what the cost impact of that, and what does that mean? If we add another layer expense, another budget, uh, another personnel, um, body to my, to my ward office, what exactly does that mean? That's one alderman asks. What exactly does that mean? More expense? More money? What do you think it means? For average, just do the math. If it's 50,000, 60,000, multiply times 50. Simple. You don't need a COFA to do that, you do it on your own. So again, the rules are here. We have a, a, a book here that everybody gets every, almost every session nowadays because we need it, right? We can overrule the chair. Certainly do that, right? That doesn't stop us from doing that. We could do it today. But, you know, going back and forth on it, trying to justify it, look, I'm not for more expense. I'm here to cut. I'm, I want to lower the cost to taxpayers on being more proactive and more, you know, effective way of governing, using technology more. Snowstorm happens and right, right away, people act and say, hey, why isn't the city, you know, shoveling the sidewalks? Think about that, wow. We ought to have that discussion, that debate. What exactly we're giving taxpayers? This is why it's sort of one begets the other. Certainly, if the taxpayer is saying, if you're going to attempt, you know, a, a debate about just adding someone, giving your counsel on rules you, you should know, then why I got to get my sidewalks then, you know, shoveled? Because obviously you can read and you can follow the rules or understand the rules on your own. I'm saying, again, that's part of the debate. We can debate whether that's right or wrong, but I'm just saying, we ought to put it to a vote, I'm a no, until we talk about it and what expense does that mean to the taxpayers? And what exactly is a liability? What exactly is going to happen with somebody else weighing in, back and forth on it? Let's debate, let's talk, I don't have a problem with that. But now if it's cost most of the taxpayers, I, I think they ought to, they ought to have a say on that. Elections are coming up. Thank you.
The, the chair recognizes Alderman Osterman. Alderman Irvin, did you raise your hand?
So I'm not quite sure how I follow that. But I'll try and I'll be real brief. I, I want to thank Alderman Beal for kickstart in the new year of the city council. I want to, in all sincerity, thank him for unifying us because all 50 of us want a legal council. All 50 of us believe that we should have a legal council. Unlike another colleague of mine that suggested we just pass something and then figure it out afterwards, I think having a legal council that would represent all of us on these decisions that are very important, I think the taxpayers, the citizens of Chicago, and I would hope all 50 of us would want to take 30 days to look at Alderman Beal's proposal, look at Alderman Riley's proposal, have that go through the budget, budget committee where we can ask the questions, offer input. It's that important, I would think, to wait 30 days. And then the unification that we have here today to support this new office, it's very important and independent and could be beneficial and will be, like COFA, it's an independent thing that we all set up. I think then we could vote on something and feel positive about it, understand what it's going to do, have a process to hire someone who will be there to be that independent counsel. That is worth, I think, waiting 30 days. So I support the idea of the council, I support Alderman Riley and Alderman Beal working together and it going to the budget committee and we have an up or down vote in 30 days and we have a process that this body will be involved in that will select someone to sit here and make these important determinations about, um, the process. So that's all I want to add. Thank you.
Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have, uh, support for Alderman Beal and what his ideas are. I also have support for Alderman Riley and what he's proposed. As, as a lawyer, but first of all, Alderman Beal, I, I have no idea what your ordinance says. I, I don't know when it was introduced, I haven't looked at it recently. Alderman Riley, yours just got introduced, so I haven't seen that either. So I, you know, if I'm here to, to decide whether or not to support something, I, I don't even know what I'm voting on. And so normally in those situations, I, I'm going to vote no because I, I don't know, I don't think it's appropriate. I think I have to, to look at this. I, I think the idea is right, I think Alderman Beal is right. I do want to say though, and I want to give credit to Alderman Riley because I, I utilize the LRB and I, I think that has become very independent and, and they've been, um, doing an excellent job, um, and independent. Sometimes in the past, if you went and talked to him, um, immediately you get a phone call. Now you talk to him and there is that confidence that what we work on is truly confidential and, and I, I do have that credibility with, they have that credibility with me. I also want to give credit to Jeff, Mr. Levine, and, you know, there's parliamentarian questions that, that come up. Jeff doesn't decide. If we hire an independent counsel, they don't decide. We decide, our rules, we're the ones that decide. They can give us guidance, but ultimately we have to decide. And as Alderman Carden has mentioned, if we disagree with the ruling of the chair, we have a right to appeal. That's all in our rules, we make up our own rules. It's not, there's not this magical answer, somebody's not going to tell us what to do, that's for us to decide. And that's what we have our rules for. I, I do agree with both Aldermen who have presented ordinances. I just, I, I don't want to make this a punt and, and just defer and defer and defer because I know that's what you've gone through and I understand the frustration, Alderman Beal. I, I do want to commit, I think as Alderman Osterman mentioned, maybe it's 30 days, um, but quickly get working on a, a solution and whether it's a reconciliation of the two or you can answer some of the questions that some of us have, um, Alderman Beal, then we can address that. And then if there's two competing, we can then have a more, for me at least, more educated and intelligent. So I, I do support what you're trying to do. I don't want you to think I'm, I'm, I'm dodging this because it's not, I just don't, I, I'm not at this point educated enough to make that decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. And the chair recognizes Alderman Waguesback.
Thanks, Madam President. I won't go too long on this issue either. Uh, I would rather see we had a discussion, but most importantly, um, I think, uh, Mr. Levine needs to be defended here because his name was brought up and his name was smeared in this conversation as if somehow he has been making decisions, he has been making the choices for us, he has been the one that is making the procedures and it is not. He's a parliamentarian who advises and consults with the chair of a committee or of this council. And let's remember that. So over the years, starting back in '07 when I started, he made, uh, recommendations to Mayor Daley, he made recommendations to Mayor Emanuel, and he's made recommendations to this mayor, Mayor Lightfoot. Did I agree with all of them? No. But as far as I could tell over the years, with the exception of a couple of times where we challenged it, those were the correct rulings. And we had to abide by them and we lived by them after the chair made them. Did we disagree with them? Perhaps. Did we appeal them? Maybe, maybe not. There have been appeals in this council since then and they've lost. And that is the proper procedure. But I just have to stand up because even though I have challenged him at times and I've been on the losing side over many, many years, the correct procedures, as far as I could tell, were taken. And to have his name brought up and to be smeared in the way that he has over the last several weeks and months, I think is wrong-headed and it should stop. Read what Robert's rule says, read what our rule says, it is an advisor and a consultant, not the person making the choice. We're the ones who make the choices. And to be hypocritical in that sense over what we've seen over the decades and the good service that he's put in, I think is wrong-headed and it should stop. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess we're all over the place today and so let, let's throw something else in the mix. Um, no, it, it's, uh, let's, let's be clear here. Uh, I, I think, um, today's vote, a, a yes vote, in my opinion, ultimately is a hollow Some setup, no resources, how effective is it going to be? Something set up that still has got to come back here, that potentially gets derailed again and again and again, how effective is that going to be? Uh, again, uh, you want to vote today, go ahead and vote and take the hollow victory and run to wherever you run, but that's all you're going to get. And that's just today. Now, if we want to do something that's going to have a lasting impact, then I think we ought to take a little time to figure out all of, all of the things, dot the i's, cross the t's, get this thing done, going and make it effective. But again, if it's the hollow victory we want today, then we'll move on this. If we want something that's going to last and make some sense, then we'll take the time, deliberate, get it right, get it done the first time and be done with this and have what it is that we all say that we want and want to utilize. Otherwise, we'll be having this conversation again in 60 days, 30 days, 90 days, 120 days about why it's not working. So again, make up your mind, do you want it or you don't want it? If you want to have, have a hurrah today, go ahead and vote for it. But if you want to go the long road, I think we need to take the necessary time, as Alderman Osterman talked about, do what we need to do and, and get this done properly. Thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen, I feel compelled to add my voice to this conversation, particularly because I think some folks have gotten a little amnesia. Many of you I met for the very first time during the transition and part of that discussion was saying, this body, the city council, needed its own lawyer. Period. That was three years ago. And the body hasn't acted. It has, we have beefed up, uh, the Legislative Reference Bureau and that was one of the initial conversations I had with Alderman Riley. I believe still that this body needs its own lawyer because the corporation counsel is not your lawyer, the corporation counsel is not my lawyer, the corporation counsel is a lawyer for the institution of our city government. And the notion that some have said that we pass things all the time without knowing about them and we fill the details in later, I take great offense to that. I don't, I don't know when that's happened. One reference was to the $100,000 that we agreed as a body to provide to each individual alderman. Remember what happened then? A lot of debate, a lot of briefing, a lot of discussion, committee, um, conversation about it, and then a full council vote. That is the right thing to do. And I would submit, this isn't about the ticky tack stuff that frankly happens here. And frankly, I, I agree with Sherman Waguesback, read the rules. Many of the times, the problems are because somebody tried to do something on the fly without knowing what the rules were and not following the rules and then standing up and acting all indignant because the rules were applied by the chair. And the rules will continue to be applied by the chair. So read the rules, follow the rules. But fundamentally, it is a larger issue. It's not just a parliamentarian, it's this body needs its own counsel. Because some think that the corporation counsel are your personal lawyers, not so. Some think that the corporation counsel can give you legal opinions that are binding, not so. So I support and have for three years, since I was elected and articulated this during the transition, this council needs its own lawyer to address the many issues that come, not just legislative drafting, but other issues that arise. And it is a complicated thing, what are we going to do? Have dueling parliamentarians on the floor of this body? Maybe, maybe, but you've got to figure it out. Let's not do things on the fly. And I agree with Alderman Cardenas, there's an expense, but need I remind you of your legislative, uh, inspector general and the amount of money that was spent there because it was done on the fly and not thoughtful? And meanwhile, hundreds of thousands of dollars that were spent and owed without having any parameters around what that individual's work was and paying a lawyer to represent the body on an hourly basis? So I urge this body to So I urge this body to take the time, refer this to committee, have the debate discussion, 30 days, whatever it is, but be thoughtful about it. That's what the residents of the city expect this body to do. Thoughtful, deliberative legislator. But if you want to just shoot from the hip, then by all means. And then as Alderman Irvin said, you're going to get a whole lot of nothing. You'll have a thiric victory. It'll make you feel good, some of you, but it won't accomplish one thing towards what I think this body needs, which is thoughtful legislation so that you have your own counsel to address a range of different issues inside and outside of city council meeting. Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Point of order, Madam President. I just wanted before it gets to whatever, could you explain to us what the ramification of each vote is? Because I don't want to knock out what Alderman Beal is trying to do, but I want to get...
There are two, there are two competing issues on the floor. And we'll take Alderman Beal's first issue, which is Legislative Council. Chairman Harris has moved to refer that matter to an appropriate committee. Alderman Beal is seeking an immediate up or down vote for consideration by this body. So I think, let's take Alderman Beal's matter first. This is up or down vote. A yea vote is for immediate passage of Alderman Beal's ordinance without committee discussion or debate. A no vote is... Yes. Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison. You have a point of clarification, Madam?
Point of clarification, I think a no, a yes vote is a vote to bring it out of Rule 41 to the floor for a vote. There's two pieces.
You're, I'll stand corrected. There's two votes. One is a procedural one for this body to consider it immediately. And then we'll take a second vote as to whether or not it will be voted yes or no. So first is a procedural vote to bring it to the floor for considerate, immediate consideration and passage today. So, Mr. Clerk, can you please, yeah, one second. Point of clarification.
So if you vote...
Alderman Beal, I will call you.
So if you vote no, to have that brought to a vote now, does that then preclude it from being assigned to a committee?
No. No. Alderman Beal is seeking immediate consideration by this body for immediate passage of his ordinance. So a no vote means you're not going to consider it now. Then we would go back to Alderman Harris to consider a referral of the matter to a committee. Does that make sense? So a yes vote procedurally is to consider it now. And then we'd have, if that vote passes, we'd have a second vote on whether or not, as written, this body passes it without referral to a committee. Are we clear on that? And Alderman Beal, I apologize, you wanted to have the last word before we do the vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, the intent of this ordinance is to empower us, for someone to give us legal representation. This ordinance is not in opposition of the administration, it is in support of us. Now, I have attempted to take this to committee and do it the right way. I have attempted to send this to committee because we all send stuff to committee and say, you know what, let's work it out in committee and let's make some amendments. But when your voice is being silenced, where you can't even bring something to the floor that's beneficial to us, is a problem, y'all. We talk about money. We talk about money. I don't see anybody jumping up and down about the executive order that was issued last month to spend over $1 million without consulting with us. That's in the Budget Committee. We talk about money just going out the door. All I'm asking you all is to, for once, stand up and fight for us in this body to have our own parliamentarian, our own legal representation. And I guarantee you, all of you all have my word, the next 30 days, I will work with the Budget Office, I will work with the administration, I will work with anybody to put this together that will be beneficial for us. You all know we can find some money to make this happen. We find money all the time to do what we want to do, when we want to do it. So I'm not trying to do anything out of the norm. If we could have brought this to committee, we could have worked all this out. But there was a concerted effort to shut it down. And that's why I put the Rule 41 in, it's based in our rules. I'll follow the rules, the Rule 41, to make this happen. Now, I take exception to my colleague that put this ordinance in today because last month, he said, I want to work with you as long as it comes through LRB. I don't want nobody in this body to control this legal counsel. I don't want anybody in this body to control the parliamentarian. I want honest, independent representation. And we can do that. I don't want to be a handpicked person by this body to say, oh, I got to go back and report to the Chairman to make sure that I can do this. I want you all to walk in the room, talk to this legal representation and get some legal counsel and walk out knowing that it's in confidence. That's what this is about. And we can work all those issues out in the next 30 days. And you all have my word on it. But I'm not going for the delayed tactic anymore. We all know that the clock is ticking and it's a concerted effort to just run the clock out because what you say? Elections are coming. So this is about making sure that we empower us, y'all. That's the bottom line. This ain't about nothing else. This ain't a slight towards nobody. This ain't trying to, you know, hurt nobody. This is about empowering the city council. So with that, Madam Chairman, I ask for a roll call vote on my item.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Chairman Wegasback.
Okay. Maybe this is for Alderman Riley's ordinance. Did that go to Rules or did it go to a different committee when it was...
I don't recall.
Okay. So it didn't, it wasn't conflicted out? And then Alderman Beal...
Yeah, I believe that Alderman Beal called a different committee to send Alderman Riley's ordinance to Rules.
Alderman Beal's, which committee?
So because of the, because of that, Alderman Riley's ordinance is now sitting in Rules as a result of Alderman Beal's calling a second committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Let's go Lopez, then Riley, and then Thompson. And ladies and gentlemen, we need to move forward.
Sorry, forgive me, Madam President. I think to answer Alderman Wegasback's question, I think two committees, two committees were called, but I don't think the clerk assigned it to Rules as being two committees. I think he just assigned it, or as I heard it, just as going to Rules regardless.
Well, when two committees are called by our rules, it goes to the Rules Committee, sir.
But Madam President, if two items go to Rules, it would still have to be referred back solely and singularly to Rules.
Good. Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. To clear up the confusion, the ordinance that I introduced was to be sent to Rules. That's actually the committee I identified to send that ordinance to. I think Alderman Beal was hoping to send it there by doing the typical, but we had already planned for it to go there because that's where it belongs.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Well, all right, Alderman Beal is back, so I guess we can see. First vote, ladies and gentlemen, is a procedural vote to suspend the Rules and consider this Rule 41 now. And then if that passes, then we would have a second vote. So the first vote is to consider Alderman Beal's ordinance immediately by this body. Alderman Sawyer.
Does this need 26 or 34 votes?
34 votes.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Lasbada votes aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell votes no. Alderman King. Alderman King votes aye. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston votes aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris votes no. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal votes aye. Alderman Sedlowski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson votes no. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas votes no. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn votes no. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke votes aye. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez votes aye. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman votes aye. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore votes aye. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea votes aye. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor votes aye. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins votes no. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez votes aye. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez votes aye. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott votes no. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Alderman Sechel Lopez votes aye. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado votes aye. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett votes aye. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin votes no. Alderman Telefiero. Alderman Telefiero votes no. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas votes no. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona votes aye. Alderman Wegasback. Alderman Wegasback votes no. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes aye. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Rosa. Alderman Rodriguez Rosa votes aye. Alderman Villegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits votes no. Alderman Spazaro. Alderman Spazaro votes yes. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent votes no. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez votes aye. Alderman Apolitano. Alderman Apolitano votes aye. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley votes no. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith votes no. Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony votes no. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner votes aye. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Kappelman votes no. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin votes aye. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman votes no. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Haddon votes aye. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein votes no.
Right. The ayes are 29, the nays are 19, the motion fails. Alderman Thompson on the motion for... No, you need 34, you need 34 votes, votes. There were not 39, there were 29 to 19. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those in favor, all those opposed to the motion for reconsideration say no. The noes have it, the motion for reconsideration failed. Alderman Beal, do you want to do your second issue?
To the Committee on Finance, and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider this by the most favorable roll call is the Finance Committee.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. You have a second item, yes ma'am?
I have, oh, okay. I'm giving him an opportunity to do this one, too. We going to do the same as one? No. Thank you. Okay. Next is item 202012901, an ordinance to establish position of Legislative Counsel. I move approval of the recommendation that this be re-referred to the...
The first one was, I took them, we took them out of order to deal with the Legislative Counsel.
Okay. So we doing Legislative Counsel? Okay, I apologize.
There's no objection, referred to Counsel, to Committee. The second one is the traffic cameras.
So the second one is a traffic camera, so we're going to re-refer that item. And the first one is 02021-1227, an ordinance to further regulate the automatic speed enforcement. I move approval of the recommendation that this item be re-referred to the Committee on Finance by the most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance, an unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Do you unfinished business? Chairman, the Chair recognizes Chairman... Chair recognizes Chairman Dell.
Thank you, Madam President. Under unfinished business, I have one item that I noticed up pursuant to Rule 41. That's a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to Section 2-92-644 of the Municipal Code regarding emergency procurement authority, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of December 15, 2021, as SO 2021-5647. I'll yield the floor so members can speak on this matter if they wish.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, good afternoon, members of the City Council. This matter was debated at length in the Budget Committee. There were a number of us who had concerns about giving the administration continued emergency powers, particularly when we have the ability to meet virtually within 48 hours to discuss any pertinent spending matter. When this matter was deferred at the last meeting, an executive order overruling us was issued by the administration, doing exactly what the law said because we wanted to discuss this more. We wanted a broader conversation. If this fails today, the executive order issued by the administration will be in effect until this body takes up this issue. So I think we should take up this issue. We have taken up this issue and we should continue to be guardians of the taxpayers' dollar, is the theme this afternoon, and not allowing the continued COVID situation, the supply chain situation, and whatever the next situation, to be grounds for executive power expansion, regardless whom the mayor is. We have shown through virtual meetings and other issues that we have, other capabilities that we have, that we can come together to make decisions within 48 hours' notice. There is no reason to allow for this kind of piece of legislation at this time anymore. And I would ask for your favorable, for your no vote on this matter. Thank you.
Any other members of the body wish to be heard? And just so the record is clear, we sought this authority so we could continue to have chlorine for drinking water. And the stunt of deferring and publishing this would have precluded us from having chlorine supply to make sure that we continue to provide safe drinking water for the residents of this city. So again, I don't, I will not let history be rewritten by convenient comments from those who have a different agenda. We needed to get this done. We got it done when it was deferred and published. Yes, I issued an executive order so that the residents of the city would have clean drinking water, so we would have a supply of chlorine. The Chair recognizes Chairman Dell.
Madam President, I mean, I think you should let the body know that the ordinance, the executive order expires when this passes.
It does. That is correct. Yes.
I guess my question is, so it was in committee, right? And we held it in committee and then an executive order was issued for it to be done anyway?
That's not, that's not correct.
I'm lost on the...
It was, it was voted on in a committee. It was...
It came out of committee.
It came out of committee, onto the floor, and then it was deferred and published by Mr. Lopez and others.
Okay. Okay, you are not the mayor. I am not, I'm not, I'm... I am not, I'm not, I'm, this is me and her.
Alderman Cardenas, I will recognize you. I will recognize you.
I can, I can understand. So it was deferred and published, and it's to come back today, but in the interim, there was an executive order inter, allowing the authority to go ahead and do this.
Yes, as you may recall from...
Why are we bringing it back up again?
Because it was deferred and published, and we...
But you've already issued the executive order.
But the executive order expires upon the passage of this one.
Well, I don't have a copy of the executive order, so I don't know. Thank you, now I'm clear. Thank you.
Alderman Cardenas, do you wish to... Apparently not. Alderman Lopez. Alderman, do you wish to speak to this issue, Alderman?
No, no, Madam, I don't, I don't want to add, Madam President, I don't want to add any more time to it. If I may, Madam Chairman, an item of Alderman Beal's that obviously was put down by the body. It's in committee. So I just want to say, I want to make sure that's get debated.
All right. Alderman, Alderman Lopez, briefly.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, everything that I said in my comments was correct. It was factually accurate. And to label the defer and publish a stunt for other motives, when that is exactly the conversation we just had about the rules that we have adopted, it's not a stunt. It's the rules of this body that we all agree to abide by. And I take great offense to anyone, regardless where they sit in this room, accusing me of other things than doing what I have as a right as an alderman of the City Council.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you. I move passage of this...
I believe, Alderman Beal, did you... Chairman, have you...
I heard a roll call, a call for a roll call on this.
I did hear, but I recognize Alderman Beal before we call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, Mr. President, here we are once again. An executive order was issued to circumvent us because we didn't get our way. We signed an executive order to get our way, and then want to come back and clean it up with an ordinance. It was DMP, an executive order was issued to circumvent us to get their way, to move forward, to spend over $1 million without us having input. But y'all want to argue over legal council. Ladies and gentlemen, our priorities are in the wrong place. They're in the wrong place. So I just want to bring to you all's attention that this thing is running a muck. And either we get a hold of this ship, or it's going to be a shipwreck.
Alderman Dow.
Just want to put on the record that the reason that we had this emergency procurement in the first place was because of the need to make sure we had the chemicals necessary to clean our water so that our constituents would not have to be subjected to poor quality water. So that should be put on the record. It was not to circumvent this council. So with that, I ask, continue with the roll call.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Dow. Burke, please proceed with the roll call. So an aye, an aye vote is to re-refer this item. Oh, excuse me. Okay, excuse me. I stand corrected. So this roll call is to either approve or reject the code amendment. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This is the purchase of chlorine and other chemicals to keep our water supply clean and safe. So this amends the code to allow for an emergency authorization for the purchase... For those who are asking what the vote is, this is a vote on whether or not to authorize the emergency approval for the procurement of these key chemicals to keep our water supply safe. So an aye vote is to approve that, a no vote is to reject it. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Point of information, Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Chairman. This was a while ago, and was there, is there a dollar amount limit?
Alderman Dow, as a point of information, Alderman Dow.
Yes, there was a million-dollar limit, and I believe it had a sunset in it as well so that this authority runs out at a certain period, certain.
The authority would run out the end of 2022. Point of information, Alderman Mitchell.
Want to be clear, I remember all briefs and everything. It is the exact same, the exact same ordinance that we talked about during the briefs. Okay, thank you.
Any other points of order, or clarification, or information? We do need 34, correct? We need 34 votes, correct? 34. Simple majority. So this is a simple majority vote required because it's not a discharge from the committee. Roll call.
Alderman, Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada votes aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell votes aye. Alderman King. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston votes aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris votes aye. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal votes no. Alderman Sedlowski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson votes aye. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas votes aye. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn votes aye. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke votes no. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez votes no. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman votes aye. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore votes aye. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea votes aye. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor votes no. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez votes aye. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez votes aye. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott votes aye. Alderman Secha Lopez. Alderman Secha Lopez. Alderman Secha Lopez votes no. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado votes aye. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin votes aye. Alderman Telefiero. Alderman Telefiero votes aye. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas votes aye. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona votes aye. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Wagispack votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin votes aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes aye. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits votes aye. Alderman Spazardo. Alderman Spazardo votes aye. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent votes aye. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez votes aye. Alderman Apolitano. Alderman Apolitano votes aye. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley votes aye. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith votes aye. Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony votes aye. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner votes no. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Kappelman votes aye. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin votes aye. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman votes aye. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Haddon votes aye. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein votes aye.
Thank you. We have 39 ayes and 6 nays. The ordinance passes. And the chair recognizes Chairman Harris. I'm sorry, excuse me. Alderman Thompson on a motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I motion we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The opinion of the chair, the ayes, or the noes have it. Chairman Harris.
Thank you. For the record, I want to make sure that item 020212901 is moved to the Committee on Budget and Governmental Operations.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
But I ask just a few more seconds of attention from my colleagues. If there is no objection, I beg leave of the body to share the news of the passing of Richard Dick Stone, Chicago journalist, foreign correspondent, and the late husband of veteran City Hall reporter Fran Spielman. And if there is no further objection, I request a moment of silence to remember Mr. Stone and express our council's heartfelt condolences to Fran and her children.
Aye. You know, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, compliment you for bringing that forward, and I would like for us to give that the proper consideration. Can we please get through miscellaneous business to give that the attention it deserves?
Sure, absolutely. I thought her business was over. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. So we have miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any miscellaneous business. Oh, no, no.
Alderman Mitchell.
I'm aware of that one motion to discharge the Committee on Customs and Rules was filed, was filed with the clerk. However, the items that were contained in that motion were re-referred under unfinished business. Accordingly, I am aware of no miscellaneous business.
Thank you, Alderman. Date and time of the next meeting? Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, according to our rules of order, I want to correct for the record that you do not need 20, 34 votes to discharge committee. It is a simple majority of 26. And based on the rules that are, that we are governed by, that last item passed 29 to 19, and therefore should have passed out of committee. If we need to recess a few minutes to consult with that council, I'll be more than willing to do so.
And that's the council we have today, Alderman. If you could give me one moment, please. Okay. So let me try and sort through this for everyone. Basically, Alderman Beal and Alderman Harris had two different Rule 41s doing two different things. Alderman Beal's motion was to discharge from rules, which was deemed out of order because the items were no longer in Rules Committee. They had actually been deferred and published. Alderman Harris was seeking to bring up the two items that had been deferred and published previous meeting, the speed camera item and the office legislative council item, to properly send those to committees which had been interrupted by the defer and publish. Because Alderman Beal was ruled out of order, he would be required to suspend the City Council rules, which is what he moved to do. And in order to do that, you need 34 votes. So I'm hoping that clears up confusion between the two Rule 41s and different standards that were applied. One was to suspend the rules, which we all know requires 34 votes, the other was not. Alderman Vasquez. Do you step forward of a microphone, please?
All right, so I appreciate the explanation. I think I'm trying to say, so that every time this body has suspended the rules, we needed 34?
Yes.
So it's plenty of times we just do it on voice without calling for a roll call to do it.
Unless you have a roll call, you don't know.
Got it. Now I know if we're going forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Beal.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that my order was to suspend the rules.
The only way for you to call the vote was to suspend.
Once an item is in committee, she was reporting out her committee.
No, incorrect. It had been, it was already before this body when it was deferred and published, it was not in committee. Before this body, when it was DMP.
She was...
That's why she did this under unfinished business, Alderman. It was not a committee report.
There's no need to suspend the rules for that particular vote.
Indeed, there was. Because you're out of order, as ruled by the chair.
You know, this is truly become the kangaroo court. Thank you.
Right. Moving on, Alderman Mitchell. Date and time of the next meeting?
I've headed it up in ordinance to the clerk, setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section 1, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, February 23, 2022, beginning at 10 o'clock a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, there is a determination in accordance with Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act, that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council may be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted in the City Clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by 10 a.m. on Friday, February 18, 2022. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. We should do this before the omnibus. Yes, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, back to...
Thank you, Mr. President. If there is no further business before this body, then I rise again to renew my motion for a temporary suspension of the rules for a moment of silence to honor Richard Dick Stone, Chicago journalist, foreign correspondent, and the late husband of veteran City Hall reporter Fran Spielman. If we could now observe this moment of silence, please.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Excuse me. Alderman Burke.
On the matter that the gentleman is referring to, perhaps it would be helpful to review the consent calendar, which included a resolution paying tribute to the late Dick Stone, which I think everyone has, if there's any questions about it.
So Alderman, are you wishing that we read that resolution? That's on the consent...
Unless the gentleman wants to...
Ramirez Rosa.
It was already adopted.
Mr. Clerk, could you, can you read the resolution? Unless you... Okay, do you, do you have a copy, Chairman? Okay, we don't have the text available at this moment, but certainly it will be a public document. So I would ask members of the council to please stand and offer a moment of silence for Mr. Stone. Thank you, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Omnibus, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion is carried, the council is adjourned.